Well. All right. And Mr. Stephen Ayers is going to open us up with the invocation, so Stephen, take it away.
Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we come to you tonight just to say thank you for all that you especially give us this opportunity to serve this town. With that, we hope that you give us the knowledge capability tonight to implement your will as we do the business of the town. In these things, we pray these things in your son's holy name. Amen.
All right. Thank you, Stephen. All right, well, we have a pledge of allegiance, so Aaron's back with us tonight. I hope you, were you on vacation last time, Aaron?
Yes, sir. We were, we vacationed in Florida to celebrate my daughter's graduation.
That's right. Well, I hope everything went well.
It did. Thank you.
All right. Well, glad to have you back. That guy substituting for you, he was a little challenged on the, on the other stuff there, so.
I'm sure he did fine.
All righty, I'll pledge allegiance to the flag.
Flag.
United States of America.
America.
And to the Republic.
Public.
Go with your stand.
Fans.
One nation.
Nation.
Under God. Indivisible.
Indivisible.
Liberty and justice for all. All righty. I'll call the meeting to order. And there we go. I'm on the, so I'll open it up for public comments. Is there anybody that's in the public that would like to speak on any subject? If you would, just speak up or hit the chat button. I'm trying to see if we have anybody. We've got a couple people that are listening, but. Anybody in the public wish to speak? All righty. I'll close my chat room. All right, next up is our agenda approval, approval. Does anybody have any amendments, additions, or deletions to the agenda? All right, can I get a motion in, please?
I move to approve the agenda as presented.
I'll second that.
All right, motion by Ms. Paxton, second by Mr. Richardson to approve the agenda as presented. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, let's have it. All right. It says, agenda approval seven forty. We're way ahead of schedule here. So first up is number two, the text amendment. Twenty-one dot oh four dot eight two. So I'll turn it over to Lynn.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Staff this evening is presenting you all with a text amendment. Get my screen. There we go. This is a request to amend Article twelve of our development ordinance. This is a section of the ordinance that talks about commercial vehicles and the ability for those vehicles to park within residential neighborhoods. Currently, the, the way the ordinance reads is it states that commercial vehicles used primarily, primarily for commercial purposes with two or more axles are prohibited from parking on streets, excuse me, with two axles or more than two. Our code enforcement officer received a lot of calls from residents complaining that in their subdivisions that there's vehicles that are commercial vehicles that are parking on the streets and causing issues within the subdivisions. When she's gone out and tried to enforce the ordinance, it's been difficult because a lot of commercial vehicles only have two vehicles and they don't have more than two, excuse me, axles, two axles, not more than two axles. So it's been difficult for her to enforce. So the language that the staff is recommending, as well as the planning board, would be that we remove that one, the words two, more than two, and it would read two or more axles are prohibited from parking on streets in single residential districts. We would also recommend that we talk about the class of vehicle as well. I believe what we're recommending is that vehicles with classes three through eight are prohibited from parking on streets. And I have a visual that I'll share with you in just a moment that will show you what types of vehicles those are. We also noticed that the ordinance does not define commercial vehicle. We felt like there needed to be a definition added, so it was very clear to people what a commercial vehicle in the town of Stallings was. So this is the definition that the staff and the planning board are recommending to council this evening for consideration of adding that to Article three of the ordinance. Yes, sir.
Does the state define a commercial vehicle in the DMV codes?
Yes, I believe they do.
Does this align with that?
I believe it does. We took this from, I do believe it does match that. I'd be happy to check it and make sure that it did. But you know, it's very, I think that the way the state defines it is by class, and I'll get into that here in just a minute. And. But again, the reason for this was resident complaints. Many vehicles had only the two axles and the current language and, language in the ordinance made it, was making it difficult for our code enforcement to enforce. So here's the, the first graphic I'll show you. As you can see, class one and class two vehicles are the types of things you may typically see someone bring home as a work vehicle, whether it's just a small minivan that may have a marking on the side of their business, some sort of multi-use, multipurpose vehicle like an SUV, your normal-sized pickup trucks. And then class two, as you may go into your oversized pickup trucks, a little bit bigger vans, like maybe a utility van or Sprinter van that you may see, you know, that, that is being used for deliveries by Amazon, that type of thing. Those are what we are requesting or suggesting and that the planning board is suggesting that be allowed in the ordinance as, as vehicles that are permitted to park on street, the town streets. But as you get into class three, you start talking about your larger delivery trucks, your conventional vans. You know, as the classes go up, you can see you start getting into more actual construction vehicles and that type of thing. Here's just a different graphic with a little bit more explanation, a little more graphics of what those vehicles are. And this is a pretty broad standard among DMV per the weight of these vehicle, vehicles and the types of vehicles in each of these classes. I, I've mentioned the planning board a couple times. This was a issue that they really wrestled with. When we brought this to them originally, there was language in the ordinance that stated that these vehicles couldn't even be parked in the front setback, which meant that homes with a shorter driveway, these cars could not only not be parked on the street, but in the driveway either. They had some issues with that, so we did change the language that would allow them to park their vehicles in the front setback, so they could park off the street and in the driveway. They were concerned, they didn't want to prohibit residents who work in, in businesses or own businesses where they may have these type of vehicles that they park at their homes. They didn't want to prevent them from doing so. So the recommendation tonight is the language that staffs presented, as well as the definition. Let me bring that back up for you, just so you can review it. So you can see recommending moving the two words than two axles. And we're also adding language that talks about the class of vehicle. And then we've, we've also removed the language that will allow these, these residents to park the vehicles within the front yard setback. So that's the planning board's recommendation. If you have any questions, I'm glad to address those. Colleen Dickinson, our code enforcement officer, is also on the call tonight. She can give you, answer any questions, kind of tell you what her experience has been in enforcing the current ordinance as well. But I will be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Lynn, this is Brad. Go back to the pictures. I don't think I knew what a class three through whatever are, but. So what we're effectively, the only thing that caught me funny was I reading it just now was the enforcement of what I do in my driveway. So, so you're saying that this ordinance would prohibit a class three from parking not only on the street, but also in my private driveway. Is that correct?
No, sir. We remove the language so that they can park in the driveway. That sentence right there, the second sentence that struck in, that struck through that or within the required front yard setback on private property was removed, so people could park in their driveways.
And I'm looking, yeah, I'm looking at the very last sentence, is what caught my.
Oh, sorry.
Three through eight are prohibited from parking on driveways. So that's down in a driveway, up by the garage. A class three vehicle would not be permitted to park. Is that right?
That is correct. Three through eight. It is being recommended that one and two be allowed on the driveway and that three through eight be prohibited. That is what the planning board's recommendation is.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Would, would you mind going back to that language again real quick? The other, or within required front yard setback on private property. I just envision a loophole in that you people can park in their front yards there. So I just. Am I interpreting that correctly?
You are not. It, it basically, the intent was that it would be in driveways, but it would not, we don't have an ordinance that prohibits, prohibits parking on grass or in yards of any type of vehicle. So you're correct.
Okay.
Lynn, I guess I'm a little, the first bullet says with more than two axles. And then the second bullet says with two or more. So I guess I'm kind of confused at, I mean, if the bullet for one says more than two axles.
Right.
Then.
Yeah. The first bullet, that, that's a great point. That first bullet is the current language. And we are suggesting that, and that's a little confusing, and I apologize for that. But that more than two axles is what's created a situation that we can't really prohibit any of these vehicles from parking on streets because most of them only have two vehicles or two axles, excuse me, I keep saying that. And, but, so what we're recommending is that be removed and it be two or more. So that would allow code enforcement to, to, you know, to give violation notices to any type three through eight vehicle that has two or more axles from parking on streets and driveways.
And does Colleen feel confident that she can distinguish between all these classes? Because when I look at some of those pictures, I can't tell a whole lot of difference between class two and class three with some of those visuals.
Sure.
I'm not sure I could do that. Can she do that?
She's on the call and I, I, Colleen, would you mind answering that question?
Sure. I feel very confident that I can. I have a mechanic background from, say, fifty years in mechanics, so I do know about the types of vehicles and the classes and the weight limits of the vehicles. If I have a question, it's usually typically written on the vehicle. Or I can have the VIN number written.
So how will residents learn these new requirements? Because if this has been a problem, I'm imagining there's going to be a lot of confused people who've been parking on the street and, or in the driveway, and now they will not be allowed to. So how will we get this information to them?
The same way that I've gotten the information about open burning and the other changes that have been made to the ordinance with media blast, the social media blast, and also I don't, if I would find one of these vehicles parked, they would get a letter from me as an informational letter versus the, the typical warning letter. So it wouldn't go out as an automatic warning. It would go out as information, like an infogram to say this is what's happened, this is what's changed in our ordinance.
Right, thank you.
Thank you.
No, yes, go ahead, Beth. I've already asked one. Go ahead.
Colleen, there's a class three, probably a conventional van, maybe a four, that parks down at the Blair Mill Park Parking Lot. Is this one of those that would get an info letter right off the bat?
There's nothing in, in that parking area that says those types of vehicles can park in, in the, the Blair Mill Parking Lot that's across from Vickery. If they've parked, if they've parked in the other parking lot, they have received notices from me to say they cannot park there.
That, that white van is parked there now. It looks like it's set up for the night, so.
Oh, it's being parked at night. I can alert the police department.
The same one. It's the same one that started the block away, I think it was, had an issue a couple months ago.
The only thing I can do after hours is alert the police department for that, so I can let them know.
So where, where would you classify a typical yard maintenance-type box truck? Would that be like a class three? Because my, my concern here is that, I mean, I'll be open with folks that live in this side of the neighborhood, I mean, of Stallings. We've got quite a few folks that own their own businesses, small businesses that have smaller box trucks. You know, my, my first thought here is that this is directly going to impact, you know, several small business owners. I'm just not, I'm, I'm somewhat cautious about implementing something like this here. Are we thinking that this is a safety issue? I'm, I'm trying to understand because, I mean, again, this, I think this is going to financially burden some small business owners in our community. I'm, I'm just not sure I, I fully understand what we're trying to accomplish with this.
It has been a safety issue. It's been a safety issue out in Forest Park in Fairhaven. And Spring Hills had a couple that have been parked on the streets with the streets being so narrow, emergency vehicles haven't been able to make it through with these vehicles being parked. With the couple I'd been called to, the people in the next door neighbor's house, and this is Fairhaven, couldn't back out of their driveway safely because this vehicle was parked in this shorter driveway. I think it was on Yellow Daisy Drive. So issues like that come up. And if someone can't egress from their driveway safely, I feel it's a safety concern.
Needs to be an HOA issue though, rather than a town issue. And I know some of the neighborhoods where their violations don't have HOAs. But I'm like, Stephen, I'm a little hesitant on this. And I, I think to John's point about parking on the grass, I mean, to me, that's more egregious than parking in the driveway. And I know that we've had situations in some of the neighborhoods where that's been a problem, and yet we're not addressing that. So I don't think I'm ready to support this in its current form.
Lynn, Colleen, let me ask this. Is this type of ordinance fairly routine in the towns around us? And I guess my other question would be just a general question to Alex and the rest of the staff. These vehicles are generally heavier. That's why they're in a higher class than a passenger vehicle, and they typically do more wear and tear on residential roads. So are we, by allowing this to, these type of vehicles to go through these residential roads, which really aren't built for heavy vehicles, are we shooting ourselves in the foot and just increasing our maintenance costs?
Well, to answer the first question, I know that this is something that we have had in our ordinance for a while. As far as other towns, I, I don't want to say yes without doing a little bit of research. I would not, I would be surprised if there wasn't something in other towns' ordinance, ordinances that, you know, limited the ability for these types of vehicles to park on residential streets. And for one of the reasons is, is from what Colleen said. If you had one of these larger vehicles parked on a residential street, it really does prohibit school buses and emergency vehicles from being able to access the neighborhood. I think we've all probably experienced this in some form, where we've had some of these types, these types of vehicles parked on streets, and it does make it difficult for even just typical neighborhood traffic to get through sometimes, especially when a car's coming in both directions. But I'd be happy to do some research to see if we could see what, how other towns handle this. But as I said, I think this is something that the town has had in our ordinances for, for a long time, even in our older ordinances. We had something that allowed us to go out and issue violation notices to these types of vehicles parked on our residential streets and in our neighborhoods.
You're kind of confusing me a little bit, Lynn, because you're, you're saying parking on the street. But keep me honest here, the new language would actually prevent, say, class three, class four-type vehicles from, you've been parking in their driveway, right?
Yes, that is correct. Anything over a class one or two, and, and these really are, once you get into class three, four, these are larger vehicles. And a lot of times, people who drive these types of vehicles, if they bring them home, a lot of like, Linda was, Ms. Paxton was saying, that HOAs wouldn't allow them to be parked in neighborhoods, so they're having to find other place to park these. And one of the reasons they're not allowed in a lot of HOAs is because of the safety. And, 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 and some of it is aesthetics. If you have a large vehicle, you know, some sort of a work truck or landscaping truck or, you know, something parked in a driveway even, it could extend over a sidewalk. It could become, get in the way from people being able to use the sidewalks as well. I do think we have an ordinance that would help prohibit that, that the police could enforce. But it has called, caused issues, and that's the reason we're bringing it to your attention, is Colleen does get quite a few calls about these type of situations. But I do want to agree with you, Mr. Ayers. The planning board struggled with the same thing. They had similar feelings that they did not want to prevent people from being able to operate a business out of their home. So they did a very good job, I think, of trying to find a good balance with saying, well, you know, let's allow class one and class two on the driveways and on the, the streets, and, or excuse me, not on the streets, but in the driveways in these neighborhoods or streets, excuse me, and just prohibit those larger vehicles from being able to park in neighborhoods, which may not, even though someone's operating a business, it may not be the best for the residents of that neighborhood to have some of these larger class four, class five, class six vehicles parking in a residential neighborhood.
Yeah, see, in, in general, I, I sort of see maybe some differentiation between maybe class three and class four and the, the larger vehicles here. But I mean, I can count off probably four or five of my neighbors in my own neighborhood right now that the class three and class four are going to impact them. I mean, I, I, I just have a little bit of a hard time knowing that they work on pretty thin margins to begin with. And now we're going to effectively make them have to find a place to park their vehicle, which might actually be the margin of, of money that they're, they're actually making a profit. That, that's my concern here, is that we, we turn successful businesses into lost businesses just by making them park their vehicle somewhere else. So.
Excellent point. And like I said, the planning board struggled with that as well.
Well, and this is my final comment. I'm okay with, with clearing the streets for safety reasons. I, I do, I think I'm pausing at the driveway. What happens on a person's driveway, I think, should be regulated by an HOA. I think, Linda, you said that. I'd like you to maybe come back and think through that a little bit more. But I think it's worth another round of discussion on that point. That's what I'm hearing. Steve and maybe Linda and others say, and John.
Yes, sir. I think, I think either that and, and maybe the class three, four might be a, maybe a different breakdown. I, I'm not really sure. I mean, I'm, I'm, I don't think, maybe, you know, a cement truck bringing that home, it's a little, little different than a box truck to some extent. So maybe there's some opportunity to look at the, break out the classes a little different, too.
I also want to point out that this language in no way prohibits someone from parking one of these vehicles in their rear yard. So if they have a gate and they have a parking pad to the rear of the home, it does not prohibit that at all. We're just trying to keep it out of the public realm, so it doesn't cause issues with emergency vehicles. So I, I did want to point that out, that they could park it to the rear of the home.
Well, this is a public hearing in, can we vote on it tonight? Was that language change effective today or July one? Alex, you know, we, we can vote.
It, it was not effective today, so you cannot vote on it tonight.
All right. So this is going to be tabled to the next, so. So I hear three people want some changes. So if you want some changes, may, you know, contact Lynn and, and make those suggestions.
Just to, I'm not for the telling them what they can and can't do in their driveway. And I also had a question. Do y'all know which class an ambulance would fall under? And the reason I ask that is because a lot of companies, like my husband's company, they convert that same type of vehicle into a plumbing truck. So what class would that be?
Um, I'm just taking a guess here. Colleen, do you, I'll let you handle that question. I'm thinking four or five.
It's a class two.
Okay.
Critical ambulances are class twos.
Okay, thank you.
And it's based on weight.
Thank you.
If we're going to talk about the driveways, a lot of driveways don't have clearance to get, in other words, they block, whatever they park on their driveway tends to block the sidewalk. Is that addressed here, or is that already addressed in something else blocking our sidewalks?
That's addressed in another ordinance. It does, we do have an ordinance that prohibits parking on driveways, or excuse me, sidewalks.
All right. As I said, this is a public hearing. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak to this? Somebody. Oh, that was Colleen that answered it. Thank you. All righty. Well, that's my recommendation. You know, make your suggestions to Lynn, and it sounds like we have a consensus on affecting people's parking in the driveway. So. So send your suggestions.
Can I make the suggestion that we keep the hearing open until we have another meeting? Because I have a feeling if there were more people who were aware of this situation, that we might have some public comment. And there's not anybody on the call tonight to comment on this. I'd like to give them an opportunity and feel comfortable that they've been aware that this is being proposed.
Well, we've done that plenty of times for, so we'll, we'll recess the public hearing until July twelfth. Yeah. All right. Thank you, Lynn.
Thank you. And to Ms. Paxton's point, we'll be happy to, we can post this information on social media or the website to help get the information out. So we'll be happy to do that as well.
Hey Lynn, do you have an HOA listing of all HOAs in the, in the community or in the town?
The town used to keep one. I know that there is one. I'd be happy to, were you wanting a copy, or would you just like us to distribute it to that list or?
Both.
Yeah, Ben Davis, Ben Davis has a copy.
Yeah, please. I'd, I'd love a copy. I've never seen it, but that'd be good.
Be glad to.
All right. Next up is our text amendment twenty-one dot oh six dot oh six, proposed text amendment to Article seventeen, Table seventeen point one of the Stallings Development Ordinance to provide standard for residential pole signs. So I'll open the public hearing and turn it over to Lynn.
Actually, Matthew West is going to handle this one this evening, so I'm going to turn it over to him.
All right. Thank you, Matthew.
Hello, everyone. Let me see if I can get this. Share my screen. So this is a, hopefully a very short text amendment. It's just to address kind of a, a gap in the sign ordinance. The only changes that are being proposed are presented here. It's just to add this line for a residential pole sign to allow for, for those style of residential signs. One other minor change just to mention here is the residential pole sign numbers, so this twelve-foot, twelve-square-foot sign area and then eight-foot height, those were chosen because they were proportional reductions from the residential monuments. And so the non-residential pole sign, sign copy area was also proposed to be changed slightly, just um just to to keep those proportions intact. So this this is the basic change, um, it'll be a twelve foot smaller than the residential sign, a residential monument, um, smaller sign area but taller height, that's kind of the trade off there. Um, and these residential pole signs, we already have um design requirements, um, those won't be changed. Um, those basically say they have to, you know, use um nice materials and things like that. Um, and I just want to show the sign that was, um, we had Stone Creek that um uh applied for a sign permit for this uh pole sign, and this is what um, you know, made us realize that we didn't have uh anything for residential pole signs in the ordinance. Um, so this is the kind of style of sign that we had in mind, um, we um made those changes or proposed those changes. Um, one thing to note, this sign, um, there's a lot of numbers here, but this sign is about nine and a half feet tall. Um, so this actually wouldn't be allowed under the proposed changes, um, they would have to shorten this just slightly. But of course, those those numbers are, like I said, they're just proportional changes, there's nothing um super binding about them, they can be changed. That's that's all I have.
All right, any questions for Matthew? Yeah, my only recommenda- i- if somebody has an uh residential pole, flag pole over eight foot, I assume they're grandfathered in, but uh obviously, right now, coming up with Fourth of July, a lot of people are advertising, you know, selling poles, and so I wouldn't be against uh having the non-residential pole and the residential pole being the same fifteen and ten.
Flag pole's not a not a sign, though, is it?
That's correct, this is this is for for signs specifically that are on poles, not flag, flag poles are covered uh elsewhere.
Well, we need to change that, I mean, I would, then I assume you need to change that residential pole, because when I read that, I'm, you know, thinking any pole on my residence, so maybe it was residential sign pole. Any questions for Matthew? All right, can I get a uh, well, that's right, uh, anybody in the public uh on tonight that would like to speak to this proposal? All right, well, with that said, I'll close this public hearing and uh we'll put it on our July twelfth agenda. Thank you, Matthew.
Thank you.
All right, next up is number four, the text amendment twenty-one dot oh six dot oh one, the General Statute one sixty D. That we had the public hearing last uh meeting, so I'll uh information from staff, so I'll turn it over to Lynn. You there, Lynn? Nope, you're muted.
Sorry about that. Um, just to bring everybody uh back up to speed, um, we held the public hearing on this item last time we met. Um, these are the text amendments um that were required to our development ordinance as part of the new state legislation that deals with zoning issues throughout the state for counties and town. Um, it's called one sixty D, which is the chapter of the general statute that this is within. Um, I gave you all some background on why it was changed, how long it's been since it's been changed. Um, the majority of these changes are legislative, um, it does not in any way affect any current approvals that we've made or any developments um that we currently approved under one sixty A. Um, but tonight, we are just taking the vote on this item, um, we need to adopt an ordinance for this as well as a statement of reasonableness and consistency. Um, if anyone had any specific questions about the changes or about one sixty D, I'm glad to answer those. Um, if not, there's a copy of the ordinance and the statement of consistency and reasonableness in your packet.
And I believe Max on the call as well, Lynn.
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you, Mac, so any questions for Lynn or Mac on this? I know it was a detailed document, but appreciate all y'all's work on it, uh, there's no questions for Lynn or Mac?
I think somebody should read that into the minutes, please.
All right, instead of that, I'll make a motion, Mayor, to approve text amendment twenty-one point oh six oh one, General Statute one sixty D.
I'll suck it in.
Right, motion by Mr. Richardson, second by Mr. Shaw to approve text amendment twenty-one dot oh six dot oh one, General Statute one sixty D. Uh, Erin, could you do a roll call, please?
Yes, sir, District One, Martin.
Aye.
District Two, Shaw.
Aye.
District Three, Paxton.
Aye.
District Four, Grim.
Aye.
District Five, Ayers.
Aye.
District Six, Richardson.
Aye.
All right, that's unanimous, thank y'all. Uh, it passes. All righty, uh, next up is uh number five, our finance, uh, all of our finance items, so uh number, uh, Marshall, take them one at a time, and uh we'll we'll address them one at a time, so uh take it away with. Oh, we got a statement of reasonableness.
Yes, sir, yes, sir, thank you.
Can you, can you bring it up, Erin? Thank you, Mac. All right, can you bring it up a little bit for me, so I can read it? There you go, thank you, oh, now take it down a little bit. I didn't print it off. All right, there we go. Uh, the request is proposed text amendment to amend land development code in accordance with General Statute one sixty D. Chapter one sixty D consolidates existing city and county planning and development regulation statutes into a single unified chapter and does not make major policy changes or shifts shifts in the scope of authority granted to local governments. The Stallings Town Council hereby finds the proposed text amendments are consistent with the two thousand seventeen Stallings Comprehensive Land Use Plan adopted November twenty-seven, two thousand seventeen, based on consistency with goals and objectives set forth in the document promoting orderly and consistent development. At their June twenty-eight, twenty twenty-one meeting, the Stallings Town Council voted to recommend approval of the proposed amendment and stated that the town council finds and determines that the text amendments are consistent with the key guiding principles, goals, and objectives of the Comprehensive Land Use Plan, and hereby recommends its approval. All right, can I get a motion on this, please?
So moved.
All right, motion by Mr. Shaw, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Martin, Erin, could you do a roll call, please?
Yes, sir, District One, Martin.
Aye.
District Two, Shaw.
Aye.
District Three, Paxton.
Aye.
District Four, Grims.
Aye.
District Five, Ayers.
Aye.
District Six, Richardson.
Aye.
I'm glad we got that vote in before Mr. Shaw and Mr. Richardson, I thought y'all caught y'all yawning while each other there, so.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Well, uh, you're not the only ones, all right. All right, now here we go, Marcia.
You're muted, Marcia.
Okay, can you hear me?
Got you now.
Okay, good deal. Um, Erin, can I get you to bring up the uh the memo uh from the agenda packet? We're going to be discussing the minimum fund balance at this point. Uh, their budget meeting on six eight, and council requested that we change the um minimum fund balance requirement that was an extra requirement uh that was adopted many, if several years ago, I, before my time, I know that. But at any rate, uh, council suggested reducing it to twenty percent. Um, the thing that I wanted to show, if you'll scroll down a little bit there, Erin. If we reduce it from thirty to twenty percent, um, we can e- expect about a seven hundred and twenty-nine thousand uh increase in, that would pop over to the unassigned, I have those two um, those actual two categories highlighted there. So the one would decrease the minimum fund balance, it would increase the unassigned balance in order for us to uh use those funds for uh some of the things that we have for the upcoming year, um, which are road uh repairs and and uh some other items that um the council decided to do. So the thing that I ask is that if um if we want this money available for next fiscal year, we would have to adopt this as a council um as of June thirtieth of this year, so that the um, when we do the audit and uh we finish out this year, that we would only have twenty percent in the reserve the beginning of the fiscal year for next year. Any questions?
How much do we have currently available to us?
It's right at about four million dollars, and I can, I can bring that up if you'd like to see um.
What I'm trying to, what I'm, what I'm trying to understand is, is that we, we have um, I I thought that it's somebody, somebody had said that we, we have a minimum of thirty percent, but right at the moment, we actually have more than thirty percent in there, right?
Well, there's a minimum fund balance, you can see that if you look at the um, the category there, it, these are, this is actually taken right from the financial statement. So those are the categories we work with, there's restricted, there's committed, there's assigned. This is considered assigned um fund balance, that minimum fund balance requirement, it's an additional thirty percent. The state, if you look, the statutory limits, they go into two pieces. Uh, there's a stabilization by state statute, there's a a long calculation that comes out, and that's, that was four hundred and one thousand last year. And then we also have subsequent year expenditures, they want that available, since you are approving a budget for next year, they want that available for next year as well. So there's a percentage of those um expenditures for next year that the state requires us to add those in. The minimum fund balance requirement is actually an additional amount that council approved to make it more stringent to not fall below a certain minimum fund balance for for the town. Now, that's something that can can be changed year to year, obviously, council put it in place years ago, and um it was suggested at the last meeting that, you know, that we move this direction. Um, personally, I think we could probably, you know, move forward. The only thing we've run into next fiscal year is the funding for um potter roads, pleasant plains. If we end up having to put out all those costs ahead of time, they would have to come out of that unassigned fund balance, thus reducing it to a a level, you know, I'm planning on um billing as.
But but can I pull you back to the the question at hand here, is that even with the thirty percent that we have, which is the, the twenty-one eighty-nine right now, we already have another four million unassigned, right?
Yeah.
Okay, so I guess, I guess what I'm trying to understand is, is that, I mean, as a council, um, I I know the budget talks were long and 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 chaotic, at least for me, and it really was probably my first one that I felt like I really could participate in, last year I was more of a bystander. Like, I was just kind of wanting to know, in general, what was the thought around lowering the minimal amount? If we've already got four million available to us, is it just that we have too much? Or are we actually wanting that extra uh ten percent to to fund a particular project? I I mean, I was just wanting to open that up to the group in general, because I I don't think that I probably caught that in the fun and frivolities we were having with the budget conversation.
Fun and frivolous, that's a good one.
Steve, my, this is Brad. My 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 recollection, Steve, is that it wasn't um, it wasn't to be dropped ten percent for any specific project. I think it just became obvious to me, at least, and then I think others um similarly, that that the thirty percent fund balance, while good, is a little bit arbitrary, which is no- nothing wrong with it, of course, but it does beg the question, how much should our savings be when we had some things we were trying to pull from fund balance this year in a one time to keep the tax rate low? So I don't think there was a project we were thinking of using it for, is that what you're asking?
Yeah, I mean, I I just didn't remember the context, and like I said, uh, the the fun that we were having with the I mean, there was a lot of churn, a lot of discussion during the 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 budget talks, so I wasn't regaling on what uh, what, kind of what was the driver for dropping it, because it seemed like we, it seems to me like we've got quite a bit of unassigned balance for potential projects, if that was the case. So I didn't know kind of what 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 the thought pattern was, so, thanks.
I proposed the idea it was to, because we're, well, we're not the bank of Stallings, and we don't need to accumulate excess funds that we don't need or or aren't going to put to use, and that if we drop it to twenty percent, we're well, still well over the state minimum. Uh, it would free up seven hundred and thirty-ish thousand, seven hundred, yeah, thirty thousand-ish to do a project, and when the time comes to pay off the building or do the triple P funding, we have it in addition to what we've already got, and ba- basically, I think you need to either use it or give it back.
Okay.
And not just not just use it frivolously, but if we have a way that we can save money or provide services and projects that we need to get out of the way and done, this is where we get it from.
Okay, thanks, Stephen.
And Stephen, uh, both categories are open to us to use, it's just, one, you have to have the minimum fund balance of over eight percent, so those are all cash that we could draw out, you know, uh, twelve percent of that uh minimum fund balance if we needed it.
Okay, you know, I was just, you know, like I said, I was just uh probably tired and and uh and just didn't recall exactly what the driving force was, so thanks.
Sure.
All right. So do we, did you say we, uh, in the first paragraph, Marcia, you said that we need to have a resolution on this?
Yes.
I ca- I didn't print out the packet, and I I'm trying to pull it up on my other computer here, do we have one?
I did not write a resolution up, but I mean, it's just really the council dropped the reserve, the minimum balance reserve from thirty, I mean, from thirty to twenty percent.
Okay, well, uh, can we, what requirement do we have to have to vote on it tonight?
I just, someone make a resolution that they would like to drop it, you know, the the fund balance there from thirty to twenty percent, and that's really all we'll need.
Yeah, just make the motions, because I I was looking for somebody that had written a resolution, so it's just, you're looking just for a motion then, okay.
I'll make that motion.
All right, motion by Mr. Motion by Mr. Shaw to drop the uh minimum fund balance from thirty percent to twenty percent. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Martin, and uh, Erin, could you do a roll call, please?
Yes, sir, District One, Martin.
Aye.
District Two, Shaw.
Aye.
District Three, Paxton.
Nay.
District Four, Grims.
Aye.
District Five, Ayers.
Aye.
District Six, Richardson.
Aye.
All right, motion passes uh by five to one with uh Paxton voting in uh nay. All righty, uh, next up, Marcia, is the uh capital budget ordinance amendment.
Okay, I did want to say that 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 resolution is of as of six thirty, as of this date, we could do it as of this date, you know, as of uh six twenty. Okay. Okay, the next one, really, this is just um, this is, I'm going to explain a little bit about project authorizations. Uh, could you scroll down a little bit further, please? On the, okay, there you go. Project authorizations, and it's actually an ordinance that comes out when you authorize a project, and that's the council authorizing a project to move forward. You think of it almost as a project budget. When we do budgets each year, we authorize money to be spent on those. If we have current year funds that are coming in or even appropriated funds for that year, we have to, even though you can have a project authorization, if in fact in your regular budget, you don't authorize funds to it, um, you don't budget funds to spend, you, you're, there's two different processes we're talking about. So I'd like to think of the project authorization as kind of a purchase order. And then the budgeting for it, it would be a thing that would be perpetual as pro, if it goes from year to year, which is, this one has been. So in the very beginning, we had only authorized as a council and as a town to spend $2 million on this project. Uh, 1.129 was going to come from outside funds, NCDOT and, um, Union County. And 871,000 was, was going to be, they were going to be funds that the town puts in. And we had $2 million as expenditures for those, for that project. And this is the end of last year. As you can see in the fourth column over, total to date, we had actually spent 1.763 million and some change. Uh, the major, the major difference, which I know the council has had many briefings on this, we spent 1.2 million, over 1.2 million on the, um, right away acquisitions and easements process, which it was budgeted very much lower than that. I think it was 800,000. So, you know, that's really what pushed this project over from the very original, um, budget for it, so to speak. So this year, we ended up, we got it while we have in our budget that we would spend 1.7 million this year. If we spent over 236,000, the last column there on the expense line, we would be over budget for the project. And in fact, we have, we, we spent, um, it was right around 400,000 for, um, utility relocations that will be expensed this year. And like I said, this is something that we, we knew going forward that it was going to have to change. And really I hadn't changed the project budget because we didn't have a new estimate as to what we thought this project was actually going to cost. So what I, what I need here is, um, or what we need to do as a, as a town is change the project original budget. So it would be a budget amendment to, um, the project. And you actually have some of these, that actually is a, um, there is a capital project amendment that's attached. And it increases it to include those utilities as well as the, um, engineering and architecture. So, and the reason I said the utilities were 400,000, if you noticed on the last one, we had $200,000 left over. It was 237,000. So I'm adding another 260 to cover all the utilities and then an additional 50,000 to get us through the bid process. Once we get through the bid process, I will come back to council with an additional project, um, budget amendment or capital project amendment that will raise this budget for this prog, for this project to the level, including the bid. So at this point, I just need council to approve, um, this capital project ordinance amendment so that we can, or, you know, we're not going over on that. It's not good to go over on, at the end of the year when you have budgets and things. So I'm just trying to really just keep it in line with, you know, what's occurred in the past and, and what we need to do to move forward. Any questions?
So the 260 has been paid?
Yeah. Well, it's, I believe, I don't know that that piece, we paid two pieces of it. We have about $3,000 if we look at the expenses for this year, but there is an additional invoice that's sitting out there. Cause we put the, uh, Duke Power billed us in two pieces or the power company billed us in two pieces. So, um, there were, there were two different invoices. That second amount there represents the, the other invoice that, it wasn't paid as of last, as of last week, but we will pay it this week. And even so, the, the.
Aaron, could you make? Aaron, could you make the screen bigger so it's all the stuff on the right is not, uh, or take, you know, pick, view it so I can? There we go. Thank you.
So question on that utilities bill. Um, I thought I saw it was 496 on one of the other screens. Uh, but specifically the Duke Power portion of it, you know, they, they put us on the hook for a year there to do anything. And now they're billing us, you know, $260,000 to move a few poles. Can we go back and ask them to, uh, itemize that for us? And, uh, see exactly what we're paying for? Cause if they moved, saying they moved eight poles and a couple hundred feet of line and we're paying, you know, that kind of money for it, it's kind of extreme.
I'd like Alex to address that.
Yeah, Ms. Gross, I'd be happy to answer that. It's a great question, Councilmember Morton. So when Duke, uh, uh, gave an estimate to begin with, uh, the cost of that estimate was around $228,000. Um, one of the bills that kind of came back from Duke, uh, after the fact for the work was, uh, closer to about 490,000. Um, and, uh, so the, the bill we got from Duke was much more than, uh, what, uh, they had originally estimated. Um, and, uh, much more than what the town had, uh, kind of authorized, um, for the work to be done. So, uh, uh, we've, uh, sent in a request to Duke for, uh, more detail on, uh, what the charges are for, uh, cause I found their explanation unsatisfactory. Um, and, uh, we're still waiting for a response from Duke and a breakdown of, of what those additional costs were for. It was general for safety reasons. Um, it sounds like, uh, they estimated that the, uh, uh, the traffic control was way under and some other things. So, uh, we've requested some more explanation from Duke and have not paid that bill, uh, they provide that.
Yeah, I, it's, it seems to me that, that us paying that much money for a single intersection's work is just crazy and we're being taken for a ride there.
Hey, Marcia, this is Brad. I'm disagreeing, John. Good point. Are, are you just trying to get through this item? Are you simply saying this is an auditing function or account balancing function year end? We're not deciding to do anything substantial, we're spending more money? Okay. So if, if that's what we're doing.
You know, we can, we can, while we can hold that bill, I can't, I can't legally withhold that from the books. We have a, we have an invoice from Duke Power. I'm going to have to record it. We don't have to pay it, but it will have to be recorded as an expense. They could give us a credit next year towards it and maybe that's what we do. But I have auditors, I have a legitimate bill from them that I, you know, we're, while we may dispute it, an auditor doesn't see it that way. They see it as, okay, you have an invoice, you know? Uh, tell me why you're not going to pay it. Well, we don't like how much they charge us. You know, I mean, if the budget was this, they charge us, uh, uh, you know, twice that amount. It's still, it comes down to a, an audit function and, you know, being able to do it per budget. And like I said, I, this bill will not be paid until there's a resolution where Alex is happy to, to move forward with paying it. Because I'm, you know, I'm not comfortable with the amount either, but we have the bill in hand and I can't, I can't withhold that from them.
All right. With, with that said, being just a accounting function, can I get a motion to approve this ordinance amendment?
Mr. Mayor, can I ask one more question?
Sure.
Cause I mean, I'm trying to understand something and Alex, maybe you can just one or two sentences here. I mean, usually when you get an estimate, if it goes over a certain amount or a certain percentage, I mean, usually folks will typically let you know before they proceed with the work. I mean, is, is there not such a clause or similar function at a town level? I mean, if I went and spent, you know, I was expecting to spend 200 bucks and I got there and somebody wanted me to spend 500 bucks, I'd be really wanting to, uh, ask why they didn't call me before they started with the work. Is, is there?
Yes, or in this case, when the project, uh, price, uh, just about doubles, right?
Um, yeah.
So yes, they, they should, uh, get a, from us. At the end of the day, you know, we're obligated, I think, to kind of pay their cost to a certain extent, but they should be, uh, proper channels to, uh, get approvals and let us know, hey, this is coming down the pipe. Uh, I don't feel that they did that. I don't know if that rises yet to, uh, the level of, of whether we have to pay it or not, it right. Um, but I think at the very least, they owe us, uh, a much more thorough explanation of, uh, of what's happening there, uh, before we pay.
Thanks, man. Sorry, sorry, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to.
All right. Uh, is, is anybody ready to make a motion?
Can I point out one other thing? You have to understand too, that these costs, I mean, look at construction, construction costs right now compared, compared to when this estimate was given to us. This estimate is old. I mean, this is, um, 2016. I mean, maybe even earlier than that. So, I mean, there's a lot that's happened between that time.
Yeah, understood. All right.
Mayor, I can make the motion to approve the capital project bu, budget ordinance amendment as presented.
All right. Motion by Mr. Richardson.
Second.
Second by Mr. Shoal. Uh, any further discussion? And could you do a roll call, please?
Yes, sir. District one, Martin.
Hi.
District two, Shoal.
Hi.
District three, Paxton.
Hi.
District four, Grimes.
Hi.
District five, Ayers.
Hi.
District six, Richardson.
Hi.
All right. Ordinance amendment, uh, passes six oh. Thank y'all. Thank you, Marcia. All right. Next up is the C, the 2021, uh, 22 budget ordinance adoption. And I don't know if we, uh, you know, I don't know if we had any explanation of any changes. As Stephen said, we, we did a lot of work on this and, uh, does any, any council member have any questions?
I'm good.
You know, I just, uh, you know, uh, just for the record, I know I'm beating a dead horse with y'all. You know, we're, uh, our revenue is, uh, you know, we're having to borrow about, uh, what is it, about 600,000, 500,000 from our fund balance to balance our budget. And, uh, you know, we just need to keep an eye on that fund balance because we're now down to 6.3 million with, uh, 5.8 available to us. So, uh, you know, we used to be up around seven, eight million. So we just need to keep an eye on that. I know it's a lot of money, but it's, can, can get dawn quick. So, uh, no questions from Marcia on the budget ordinance? Alex, do you have any comments?
Yes, sir.
All right.
I'll make the motion, Mayor, to approve the manager's recommended budget, if that's what it was called. Yeah, that's, I lost the screen. Somebody went, I don't know where.
Uh, 2021 budget ordinance adoption.
I'll make that motion.
All right. Motion by Mr. Richardson. Can I get a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Martin. Can I get a roll call, please, Aaron?
Mayor, I just wanted to clarify for just something for the record. So this, this budget is different from the manager's recommended budget, uh, original. I believe, uh, there were some changes. Your call we went through adjusted the tax rate. So I just wanted to clarify that, um, uh, just for, uh, for technical reasons, to make sure that what's, is, is what's intended to be.
Thanks for that clarification, Alex.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
This is the one that does the two pennies.
That's right. Yes, sir.
Yeah, this is point 186. Yeah. All righty, Aaron, could you do a roll call, please?
Yes, sir. District one, Martin.
Hi.
District two, Shoal.
Hi.
District three, Paxton.
Hi.
District four, Grimes.
Hi.
District five, Ayers.
Hi.
District six, Richardson.
Hi.
All right. The budget passes unanimously. Thank y'all, Marcia. Thank y'all.
Not unanimous.
Oh, who was negative?
Me, David.
They, oh, I'm sorry, David. I zoned out for a second. Five to one with Mr. Shoal in the negative. All right. Next up is the fee schedule adoption. All righty. Is this something, uh, Marcia or Lynn, that we, y'all need to review any of the changes?
Uh, we went over them in the meeting. I don't know if you want me to highlight most. The, the biggest one is going to be the, uh, development agreement fees. Uh, they went up significant, well, not significantly, but they did go up based on the legal fees that we'd incurred this year. Took, we weren't able to cover, uh, the, uh, the fee, you know, the fees weren't large enough to cover what, what we were doing and the work we were performing for them. So that was an increase from 62 to 8,500, I believe, 6250 to 8,500. And then we went up a little bit on our towing per vehicle. It's 150 instead of 120. Um, and then there were a few minor changes in there. Other than that, this is pretty much what we want, this is exactly what we went over in budget meetings.
Right. Council, have any questions? All right. Can I get a motion, please?
Mayor, I'll make the motion to adopt the, um, 2020, 21, 22 fee schedule for the town of Stallings as presented.
All right. Thank you. Motion by Ms. Paxton. Can I get a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Shoal. All right. Uh, any further discussion? Aaron, could you do a roll call, please?
Yes, sir. District one, Martin.
Hi.
District two, Shoal.
Hi.
District three, Paxton.
Hi.
District four, Grimes.
Hi.
District five, Ayers.
Hi.
District six, Richardson.
Hi.
All right. That's unanimous. The, uh, 2021, 22 fee schedule is approved. And the last one, E, uh, I've asked Alex to, uh, do something to just change that to CIP instead of CMIIP. Mr. Griffin's no longer on the board. Just make a capital improvement plan, but, uh, uh, not a lot of changes that I saw. Any changes in this, Alex or Marcia? I didn't see any other than you.
The only thing that we changed, the thing, we agreed the 2022 budget items that were in the budget, we made sure that they were in black on the, um, the 2022 column. And, uh, most of the other decisions that were to push out, we, we didn't do anything to.
Right. And I know, you know, the more details was in the police department on the next page.
Want to go down one more page, Aaron?
Yeah, there we go. Right. Any questions from council for, uh, for, uh, Alex, Marcia or Chief, uh, who's on the call? Or Lynn? No questions? All right. Can I get a motion on this, please?
Hey, Mr. Mayor, I'll ask, I'll ask one question real quick. I guess I'm not, I'm not familiar with what, what's the difference between this and the budget? I guess maybe I'm not, not following what, uh, how, and maybe it's just a que, I'll take it offline and ask Alex later. That's all.
Well, no, I mean, it's a good question. I mean, the black is what we have in the budget. And in the blue, uh, and any other color is what we need to save or budget in the future years, save for it or budget for it in future years. Any, any, any capital improvement plan is just what you expect to spend, uh, money on, on capital in the future. So that's what, in my opinion, in my simple way of looking thing.
Okay.
Mr. Ray, is the mayor's right. You know, the budget is more the hard and fast. This is what's being implemented this year. The capital improvement pain is a guide, right? You want to make sure, you know, stuff, uh, you want to make sure that on, like trucks, you're replacing those with. you want to make sure that on like trucks, you're replacing those with within a reasonable time, right? So you don't have costs breaking down. And also the big stuff, you be aware of those. And some years you'll be able to fund a lot of the capital. Some years you might have to push something off. But generally, it's a guide, uh, and it's kind of future forward looking as a planning tool.
Okay, and and that's kind of what I was looking for is just an understanding there of what what this was. Thanks, man.
Yeah.
All righty, anybody want to ready to make a motion, please?
Sure, I'll I'll do it, Mayor. I'll uh move to approve the capital improvement program for twenty twenty one to twenty twenty six. Or twenty twenty two to twenty twenty six.
All right, much of Mr. Rich, Rich, can I get a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Ayers, uh, to approve the capital improvement plan as submitted. Uh, Aaron, could you do a roll call, please?
Mayor, can I wish you a good roll call?
Thank you, ma'am.
I thought we took out of the budget for this year, the tractor attachments and the um lift of a maintenance shop, and I see that's in here in black. Is that um? Am I not remembering that correctly?
No, you're remembering it correctly. They're out. Um, so uh, you'll see here, I think you're looking at the cost, Ms. Paxton.
Yeah, okay, so it's not in the two column. I see. Thank you.
That's right.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Uh, Aaron, could you do the roll call, please?
Yes, sir. District one, Martin.
Hi.
District two, Shaw.
Hi.
District three, Paxton.
Hi.
District four, Grimes.
Hi.
District five, Ayers.
Hi.
District six, Richardson.
Hi.
All right, the CIP passes unanimously. All right, thank y'all. Thank you, Marcia.
Thank you.
All right, next up is uh the Stallings Fest.
Mayor, if I may, you mentioned changing the name to CMIIP to the CIP.
Yeah.
Is anyone opposed to making those changes? If so, there's it's, I believe it's called that repeatedly in the in our policy, so if everybody that I think we could go back and uh make some policy changes and bring them back to the board for consideration.
Well, 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 I'll tell you what, Alex, if you got to go through a bunch of paperwork and things like that, we can leave it as is. I don't I don't want to create just extra work for no reason. I'll I'll call it whatever I want to call it, so. All right.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right, thank you for bringing that up. All right, Ashley, you're up. Thank you.
Good evening. Can everybody see me and everybody hear me?
Can hear you good, Ashley. Thank you.
Yeah, I can hear you.
Excellent. So tonight I'm here to talk about Stallings Fest, and we have it scheduled for Saturday, October twenty third. And there were a couple of things that we wanted to get councils input on, and those two things were fireworks and amusements. And we wanted to get councils input on whether or not we continued having fireworks at this event. Um, that will help us determine the timeframe for the event with a few logistical concerns, including, um, you know, we're a very tight uh area in there and property area is a concern, uh, fire permits and ordinance concerns, and then whether or not we wanted to have amusements. Uh, and by amusements, I mean the, you know, the large amusements, whether or not we have uh the powered amusements, not the bounce houses, but the large powered ones that require us to bring in um, the other type of of things like the the et cetera. So I just wanted to get the council's opinion on those for this evening, and I'll turn it over to you for your thoughts.
All righty, do we have a cost on the fireworks and the amusements?
Yes, we do. Uh, fireworks have typically run us about ten thousand dollars for a ten minute to twelve minute show. And our amusements cost us about twelve thousand uh to fifteen thousand dollars, depending on how many we have.
If you have fireworks, you have to extend the the timeframe of the event, too, don't you?
Correct. Uh, if we have fireworks, uh, obviously we have to have them after dark and sundown during that time of year is about eight thirty nine P M. So we have to shift the timeframe of the event so that we can have fireworks after dark. And we also have to seek a permission from the nearby uh property owners to make sure that they're okay uh with us having it at that time. And also, we have to do some other things like mow the grass and uh, you know, send out um, you know, letters to everyone around letting them know that there's going to be a noise ordinance issue at that point in time. Uh, but I mean, that, you know, that's uh just stuff that we have to do normally.
It was neither then neither uh fireworks nor the major fair amusements replace those with bounce houses and that kind of stuff. Keep the event to the shorter timeframe.
I I uh, let's take a moment. I couldn't I couldn't hear you clearly, David, for the first part.
I'm okay with dropping the fireworks and the heavy fair type amusements. Uh, replacing them or at least uh the the instead of the fair amusements or the rides like that, bounce houses and that kind of stuff.
Right, okay, so dropping the dropping the fireworks and just dropping the heavy amusements and so, okay.
Well, that's not necessarily forever, just for this year.
Right, and I I agree with you. So, uh, what's what's the rest of the council feel like?
I I agree with with Dave. That I guess the other concern I have and not to be the worry word is that, you know, we've got this new Delta variant coming out and two out of three people in Union County still aren't vaccinated, so uh I it's likely going to be here in that timeframe. So, um, I I I think going slightly smaller and and having, you know, the what ifs laid out. Uh, if that's the case, uh, is probably a smart move this year.
Well, the other thing is, actually, your your staff is so creative. Uh, I have fully confidence that y'all can find something in there that doesn't cost as much as it's just as fun for kids and uh entertain the crowd.
Yeah, we do have a lot of ideas on that, actually.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Any other comment?
I agree not to do.
All right, thank you, Heather.
I agree for this year, but I I don't want us to imply that we won't ever come back to that because that is kind of the trademark of Stallings Fest. And uh, when we added the fireworks a few years ago, it was a really well received addition. So I I want this to be um this year only and then reconsider next year.
Okay.
All right, can I uh, any other comments?
Is there going to be, I mean, I guess when we advertise, I mean, is that kind of going to be part of that advertisement? You think that um, you know, it's going to be a smaller event this year?
I don't think it's going to be a smaller event. Um, I think it's still going to be a large community event, and we'll still advertise everything we have going on and the timeframe that it's going. Um, and we'll definitely list all of the special things we have going on. And we'll make sure to capitalize on the new and special things we have going on to and to highlight those so that we don't leave a gap. Because when you take away the fireworks and take away the amusements, um, you run the risk of leaving a huge gap, and we don't want that to happen for the community. We want to focus on everyone coming together and being able to set up some tables and, you know, focus on that family environment. And what we don't want to have happen is people to come and say, oh, this is something like last year's or two years ago's Stallings Fest. So we want to be able to fill the gap with other exciting opportunities. So what we'll do is we'll highlight those and we'll kind of ramp it up and say, okay, we have these other opportunities coming, you know, we're going to have a balloon artist, we're going to have these magicians, we're going to have these dinosaur guys, et cetera. So we'll kind of lead it together for the month or so coming up so that people know what's happening. But it won't be fireworks and it won't be the amusements, but we'll still have all those exciting opportunities.
Gotcha. If it's not going to be any smaller, what are we going to do about parking?
So we still have the opportunity that we did two years ago. What we did is we partnered for the C uh CPCC, and we did the shuttling uh from there. So that's still uh on the plan for us if we needed. And with James River shutting down, what we ran into before was the timeframe. We couldn't park there because they had their business open. So we'll seek out a partnership with them to see if the property owners open for us using that as an opportunity to park. And if not, then we'll go back to CPCC and offer the shuttle opportunity again.
Thank you.
All righty, thank you, Ashley. Any other further questions, comments? All right, can I get a motion? Uh, what what I what I'm hearing is since somebody can't make the motion that uh we will eliminate the fireworks for this year's Stallings Fest and uh any hit heavy amusement rides for this year uh only.
So moved.
That sounds accurate. Okay, motion by Mr. Shaw. Can I get a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Ayers. Aaron, could you do a roll call, please?
Yes, sir. District one, Martin.
Hi.
District two, Shaw.
Hi.
District three, Paxton.
Hi.
District four, Grimes.
Hi.
District five, Ayers.
Hi.
District six, Richardson.
Hi.
All right, motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Ashley.
Thank you.
All right, next up is the bypass landscaping. Uh, Mr. Lucky, are you still on board? I should have moved you up. I apologize.
Uh, no problem at all. I'm still here.
All righty.
All right, how's everybody doing today, Council Mayor?
We're doing good. Appreciate you joining us.
No problem, no problem at all. I'm gonna kind of drive a little bit here, uh, share your screen. I've got some visuals that I wanted to share with you all. So let me grab, let's see here. You know, trying to figure out this technology here.
Hey, what's up?
Well, that didn't work.
Talked to the chief the other day. I'm sorry, I'm on a council meeting. Let me mute.
Okay. So you you did allow me to uh share the screen, correct?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. You can you can share the screen now, sir.
All right. I'm on a Mac here, so it's asking me for some uh accessibility and stuff here, so. Do this right quick. And zoom in that. Think we'll do it. All right. Call for you later, folks. For some odd reason, it is not allowed. There we go. All right, sorry about that. Okay, can you see my screen?
Got it.
Great. All right, so uh, this first visual here basically just kind of shows you the uh corridor here. Uh, the road bypass or expressway, and the uh highlighted area right here to the top is the area of concern, which is basically the gateway to Stallings, uh, the McKee and the uh Stallings Bridge areas. And I just wanted to kind of show you that to kind of give you a frame of reference of how the gateway for Stallings, how it relates to the entire corridor. Uh, with that in mind, um, talking with Alex and 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 trying to get an understanding, there there were some comments and concerns that you wanted to have addressed. And I will say this upfront, we we have no concerns or issues with the comments that you all provided. And I'm just going to try to address with those visuals. The next slide I'm going to show you is the actual bridge at the McKee McKee Road bridge area there. One of the concerns was eliminating all of the turf areas that was uh originally part of the original plans, and that's what the green area is. I'm going to zoom in here a little bit so you get a better idea. Um, this was the original plan where we had kind of a turf area. There was concern that, you know, maintenance and 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 having moors out there within this high profile busy area is probably not in the best interest of the town. So uh, I'm going to show you what I'm going to do to kind of alleviate that concern. Also, there was concern that these planters, which were created by these Berry Islands, which I had my hand kind of pointing at. Uh, the the town was not really interested in developing landscape in those areas, possibly going back in and putting in class A stone or decorative stones. So with that understanding, I just got some some visuals kind of showing what we plan to do uh in the future of the plans as we finalize them. This next visual kind of shows how we will address that. I'm going to zoom in here a little bit.
Hey, Mr. Lackey, could you maybe uh kind of uh uh, give us some context on the location, what we're looking at here, please?
Yeah, this is McKee, the McKee Road uh Bridge area. So it's actually the bridge right before you get to Stallings.
Got it. So I believe that'd be uh the Marie Garris Road intersection.
Yes, so the in the original, uh, the first slide I showed you, this that highlighted area, these two areas right here. That's that's the McKee Road area, and then this is the Stallings Road area. What I'm showing right now is what we plan to do in terms of adjusting and and making amends to some of the comments that you all supplied. One of the concerns was was actually having the turf areas. What we will do in the final plans, we will eliminate all turf areas and just provide, zoom in a little bit more a two foot decorative uh stone buffer. We'll extend the existing plant material. In this particular case, we're utilizing distillum, uh, which is a pretty hardy evergreen shrub, medium sized shrub, as well as daylilies and a combination of daffodils as well as Rebecca, the crepe myrtles and daffodil. So we'll just extend those bed areas and provide that two inch wide decorative stone buffer uh from the edge of the bed all the way down to the guardrail. With with that adjustment, there will not need or be any need for any type of mowing or anything of that nature. Uh, keep in mind, there is no real, no maintenance plant beds or anything. There will be some maintenance that will need to be done in terms of pruning and removing of dead wood and things of that nature, so. But that's what we would do with the McKee Road uh Bridge. Uh, moving right along the actual corridor itself, uh, moving up from McKee Road heading in towards Stallings. I'm going to zoom in a little bit to this. Originally, we had planted these with distillum and a mix of Nellie ours. I I realized that the town and the uh Town Stallings was really concerned about possibly getting in there and planting all of that. We will remove all of that and replace it with class A stone. So it's not, that's not a, you know, it's not a real, real problem for us. We can do that. Uh, a lot of this was a a generated early on with the turnpike, and we had a uh a concept that was developed that was kind of based on a tier classification that we use in any of our aesthetic developments. Uh, in this particular case, we were developing these plans based on what we would call our landmark development, which is really high end. Typically, whenever we do these types of developments for municipalities, cities, there is an incorporation of turf, uh, uh hardscape and things of that nature. But just in talking with Alex and trying to address concerns of the town, we would eliminate all the planting here in these planter areas and just replace that with class A stone. One of the things that uh Alex and I was talking about in our last meeting was visibility. In these particular areas, there is traffic traveling, and because of the grays, they these areas are going to be visible pretty much uh by anybody traversing down the uh the ramps here to to come to these these intersections here. So um, that's one thing to keep in mind, so.
Mr. Lackey, could I provide some further context there?
Sure.
Um, you know, if anybody's driven by there right now, you notice how kinda narrow of a space it is for plants to kinda grow in there. You can already see the kinda weeds popping up now, and it just kinda doesn't look good. So what we really struggle with is even though Mr. Lackey can recommend some really hardy, good plants, is anything really gonna go, grow in there short of some, you know, kind of evasive, you know, kinda un aesthetically pleasing, um, weed? So I think that was the thought process process behind that, um, in that if we planted anything there, would it, would it be there for the long term? Jeff, on the, when I think Class A, you know, rock, I think riprap, um, and that area, those angles, I think it, it could be more you know, you're probably gonna be able to see it from all angles, given the different elevation changes, both on the road network and probably from development as it comes. Uh, if the town were to add kinda stone and want to add stone to that area, could we do something more decorative than perhaps just a Class A stone?
Yeah, I mean, I was gonna recommend Alex that that would be the, the, the move anyway, is that we would just go with decorative stone throughout those areas and just eliminate the plantings. Uh, I don't, I don't think it's gonna be, there will be a little difference in the pricing between the two. Uh, but I don't think it's gonna be substantial. So I think that's something that we can do. That's not, that's not, I, I, I don't think that's a real concern. So we can definitely do that. Uh, mov- moving right along, uh, as we move towards the, uh, the Stallings Bridge area. And this is what was originally designed. I wanna talk about first this kind of median here. There was concern of, uh, the turf areas, and that's what the, the kinda bright green areas are. And I'm gonna show you a visual that kinda just shows you where we've basically eliminated that altogether, and we've just expanded a lot of the perennials. The perennials and the plant material that we're using currently and at this particular bridge and the gateway into Stallings, we've already used, uh, in, in large numbers throughout the Monroe Expressway. But also, we've used them throughout the state. They're pretty hardy. This is a really difficult, tough environment with car emissions, full sun exposure, uh, you know, potential drought and things of that nature. So a lot of this stuff that we do use has already been proven to, to kinda survive in these types of environments. So as you would see here in this median here, where we have the green area, which would be turf, we were looking at providing zoysia turf there to kinda give you this clean edge. We would just eliminate all of that and, uh, replace it with the existing plant material that's out there. And it's a combination of, uh, butter popcorn daylilies, daffodils, and black-eyed Susan. And, uh, I've got a visual here to kinda show you what that would look like. This is what it would look like. Uh, we've basically removed all of the turf. We just expanded the black-eyed Susan and the butter popcorn daylilies mixed in with daffodils. So it's just been expansion of what's currently out or currently designed. Just really, just really getting rid of all of the turf areas. So you would have this brick banding around the edge. And then in the interior of that, you would have this combination of perennials, uh, black-eyed Susan and daffodils and daylilies. Are, are, are there any questions thus far?
Now, like, uh, some of these, like the daylilies, do they need to be replanted every year?
No, they're perennials.
Oh, are they?
Yes, they, they, they're, they're one of the hardiest perennials that we use on our roadside. They're proven. Uh, we use them throughout the entire state. And what we like to do is underplant them with, uh, daffodils. Daffodils typically will bloom in February, uh, you know, towards the end of winter. And so it's just a great underplant for day, uh, daylilies. Daylilies are gonna be blooming this time of the year into late summer. And so you'll have that yellow, uh, uh, flower uh, in combination with the black-eyed Susan, which is a yellow flower too. So they kinda kinda work with, with each other and provide color throughout the summer, especially in a time when it's, it's hot and there's not a lot of color out there on, on the roadside.
And then, and then what about irrigation?
Uh, well, uh, that was something I was gonna wait towards the end. I was just gonna kinda take you through the corridor or through the gateway to kinda show you what I've done in terms of adjusting based on what you all provided. And I want to talk to you all specifically about that. And what we've done as a unit in, 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 in terms of irrigation in some of the more sensitive areas where we do design and development. The, the next area I wanna look at is the, uh, is this quadrant here. Let me zoom back out. Which I think is a major focal point for the town, uh, where we have, you, you see where my hand is and you have the turf areas. What I've done is gone back and adjusted that uh, to accommodate or to remove actually the turf areas. And so this next slide is gonna show, show you what I've done. Zoom in a little bit. Basically, we've, we've kept the, the, the initial layout, but what I've done is expanded all of the daylilies, uh, black-eyed Susan beds. And, and, and at the base of this, I would have a two-foot-wide decorative stone buffer that would go all the way up to the actual guard rail. And you would basically just eliminate all of the turf area. So other than maintenance of the perennials, some true pre, true, uh, tree pruning, shrub pruning, that's pretty much it. No real, no real turf.
So this is in front of the hospital? On the opposite side of the street from the hospital?
Yes.
Yes. Yes. And now here is the, uh, me, sorry about it again. This is the other median on the other side of the bridge. And this is what we initially proposed. That's what the, the green area is basically where we have. We've proposed, uh, uh, originally turf. We're gonna remove all that and pretty much do exactly what we did on the other side of the bridge. And let me show you what that will look like. Uh, we would just extend the black-eyed Susan, uh, the daylily daffodil combination and end up with some more black-eyed Susan on the top. So it's just expanding the perennials out there. These are proven plants that will survive. And in fact, you can drive the corridor right now. Uh, the, the, the butter popcorn daylily should be blooming right about now, and the black-eyed Susan should be starting to bloom as well, so. I'm sorry.
I saw some crepe myrtles.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, we had originally had those in there. We're gonna replace those with some natives, some, uh, red buds. Uh, in the original design and development of this and working with the turnpike, we wanted to have this kind of, uh, consistent tree that would provide canopy. But also, from a department standpoint, we use a lot of crepe myrtles. For one, their survivability rate, but also from a traffic engineering standpoint. It's a weak wood tree. And whenever you have errant vehicles, uh, that run off the road, they do not create the damage that a lot of other trees are, that would, you know, a lot of other trees would create. And that's one of the reasons why it's kinda is used here. Uh, it, it, it survives. But because of some legislation that's been passed, we're gonna swap those out and, uh, install red buds.
So Jeff, this is Brad, um, Richardson, and this may be a question for Lynn, our planning staff, and not you, but um, on, outside of the medians upon the property owner's property, particularly to the left of this particular median, um, where your hand is up there, move up a little north. Um, I'm just curious as to what our standards are for the the setback right-of-way plantings. Uh, do we have something there, Lynn? Cause it occurs to me that this section uh, opposite the hospital, approaching the roundabout, on the private property side of the road, what, what are we expecting there? Sidewalks and plant?
Um, we currently don't have a streetscape plan or program adopted for this area. Um, there is a portion of the Stallings Spine, which is part of the Greenway, that will be on the hospital side. Um, this is the, an area, though, that, um, Katz is looking at for the, um, the light rail station. Um, so I assume there'll be some planning done in terms of aesthetics that, um, will go hand-in-hand with that TOD plan and that station planning, um, which, uh, Katz is currently, we're just beginning that process. Uh, but we do not have, um, anything, um, in, in terms of a streetscape plan for this area. The only thing we have currently would be our ordinance and what the landscaping requirements are there, which would be just street trees. Um, and there probably would be just a five-foot sidewalk required on this side of the road.
Yeah, I was gonna say this currently, that yellow area right here, that's an actual sidewalk that's out.
And that, that is being replaced with, um, Atrium is putting in the, um, a fourteen-foot multi-use path as part of their project, which will be part of our Greenway Plan.
Okay.
So that may need to be reflected on here, if that's not showing.
Ms. Hare, Alex, that's a, that's a really great point that Councilmember Rich brought up, and you brought up about the Atrium Plan. Could we get perhaps Jeff, uh, a copy of what Atrium's doing right there? And then just make sure that his plan is marry, marries with, uh, with what Atrium's required to be doing?
Yeah, that, that would be good to, good to have, cause
Good question.
Although I think because of our setbacks and stuff, the trees that I'm using, the larger of deciduous trees on this side are pretty, pretty much way off the right, uh, right off the road edge anyway, so. But we'll def, that'll definitely be helpful.
Yeah, and I would just make a general point that those four, those four land masses, um, on the corner of that have opportunity for being just as impactful, if not more so, than the median strips, uh, which are significant in one case, but um, uh, I would like some attention paid to those four quadrants and maybe NC DOT actually might own one of them. I'm not sure. And Jeff, that may not be your group, but on the Richard Baker side of the street. So just, just food for thought and, um, I'll leave it at that.
Jeff, can I ask, you made reference to some legislation that was limiting your options for, um, tree species. Um, has that actually passed? Because the conversation we had on the phone a couple of weeks ago, we talked, um, about using crepe myrtles and using a purple and lavender theme because that would be, um, unusual. And since this is a landmark intersection, we wanted something that would be, um, high-end. And I mean, crepe myrtles may not be quite as hardy as red buds, but they definitely are more ornamental and prettier. So what's the, um, decision with regard to that legislation? Can we not use the purple and lavender crepe myrtles?
Currently, that legislation is still in the House, so there hasn't been a final decision. I think the Senate has passed it. Um, I'm not exactly sure exactly where we stand. I'm, I'm still kinda waiting for some clearance from the folks on the first floor in terms of how we kinda move forward. In the back of my mind, I was just kind of having a, a substitute if we were questioning called in to make that. Uh, but as it stands right now, we, we were using what we would call Muskogee crepe myrtles, which are, you know, they're known for being really great street trees, the survivability rate. Not only that, our traffic engineers love them because of potential for errant vehicles. But also, um, they're just, they survive in these types of environment where you have high-car emission, full sun, horrible soils. They just, uh, they're just great trees from that standpoint. Uh, I, I love natives. I would love to use natives all over the place, but native trees and plants need to be in native environments. And the thing is, is that whenever we build roads, we turn up all the soil. And so a lot of the soils that are out there just are not conducive to a lot of native plant material.
So did I misunderstand you? Um, so are you still planning to use the crepe myrtles?
We, we are, uh, well, it's, it's in there, but my thing was, is that I, I need to have a, a ma- native substitute in the event that word passes. And then I've been told that I need to swap out all of those plants.
I see. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm just, just wanted to make sure that I have all my bases covered as we move forward, uh, to let this particular project in the fall. And the last thing I wanted to talk about was the irrigation. We do have, uh, originally had designed irrigation. And I, I will tell you this, uh, we normally do not do irrigation within our interchanges. And in fact, we've done them in our welcome centers and rest areas. But over the years, we have completely removed them in large part because of the maintenance issue that they bring. You know, the, e- e- especially in an area where you're gonna have high-traffic volume, potential errant vehicles that could roll off and roll, roll into the medians or quadrants and replacement for that. But just the long-term maintenance of irrigation is, 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 is quite pricey. At least that's been our experience over the years. Uh, also, the plant material that we're utilizing in this development, these have all been proven plants to work in really harsh environments. Uh, and I say that because one of the things we did, and I showed you the visuals, we're gonna go back in and remove pretty much all the turf areas. And so with that removal of the turf area, uh, and, and, and obviously it's up to the, to the county council to make this decision. Is there a real need for the irrigation? Uh, the plant material that we're incorporating in the quadrant here at Stallings, as well as the medians, and as well as at McKee, um, McKee, McKee Road area, are plant materials that we have, you know, we know will survive. So I just wanna throw that out there. Uh, irrigation is, is, is great in the sense of, you know, you, if you're gonna have the maintain, you're gonna have the ability to maintain it, but it can become a, a burden over the years, so.
Well, if you're recommending these hardy plants and, uh, which we all know, uh, they are, and crepe myrtles are, red buds are. So, uh, I appreciate you saving us some money then.
Yeah, so just, just let me know if you guys are, you're okay with us removing the irrigation or throwing it in. It's really up to you all. We, we, you know, we will follow you all's lead.
Well, Mayor, just to be clear, the irrigation is something that we requested that DOT agreed to install, so the initial installation is at no cost to us. But I do understand that they are trying to, uh, plan to turn the maintenance of these beds and
Right.
um, irrigation system over to us in the future. Um, and I mean, I've always lobbied to keep it. And I think, you know, that there are some other plant options that we could do if we choose to do that in the future that are probably a little more colorful and, uh, seasonal, um, that would require some irrigation. So I'm still lobbying to keep it myself, but I know
Okay, well.
Has to have the vote.
Alright, well, I can go either way. So if, yeah, yeah, I, I knew they were, I was just talking about saving the money on, uh, maintenance. But alright, well, we need a decision, uh, to give Jeff and DOT a decision on irrigation then. So why don't we, uh, are y'all prepared to do that tonight?
Uh, I am. I don't know about anybody else.
We don't need a motion. Let's go down the row, uh, consensus, so, uh.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah, Heather.
Um, if we, if we keep with the irrigation like Linda is saying, then can we ask for, um, um, some more decorative flowers? Or would it still just be the daylilies and black-eyed Susans, and we would have an irrigation system?
Uh, are you talking potential annuals and things of that nature?
Yes.
I mean, that's, I mean, that's a whole nother ballgame there. We, we normally do not do annuals in our, you know, our right-of-way.
Hmm.
Uh, because of the long-term maintenance of it. I mean, we could certainly
Or could we do different perennials that just were like a teeny bit of maintenance?
I mean, that's, that's, that's an option. That's, that's certainly an option. Yeah, but to be honest with you, uh, uh, Heather, uh, pretty much, I mean, the, the plants that we have out there are gonna provide some color. I mean, in fact, if you, if you haven't ridden down the corridor lately, that, those plants are gonna start blooming. You, you're gonna see major pop with the, uh, the butter popcorn daylilies and the, uh, black-eyed Susan. I mean, there are, there are other perennials, uh, I mean, there are, there are other perennials, uh but the ones that we're using are probably the most hardy and the most uh impactful in terms of color, providing that pop that you would want. But I mean, I have no problem adding a a variety of perennials with the irrigation, with with the understanding that, you know, the 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 town would have to take this over and maintain that. And that would be part of our municipal agreement that the town would have to uh sign off with the department.
Listen, let's handle the irrigation question first then, so uh. Uh, I'll go down, John.
No, we need to be cutting long-term costs, not adding to them.
Uh, David?
I'm I'm the wrong guy to ask about green stuff. You've seen my yard, you'll understand. This is, this entire subject is over my head.
Well, all all we wanna know is, do you want water to water the plants? So if we uh choose something that's not as hardy, we can keep it alive.
That that's a, that's an expensive deal and it needs to be winterized every year and uh they break, I see my neighbors break, fix, you know, I don't know, I I go, I'll go last.
Yeah, that's my, that's my role, I go last.
No, I wanted to go last.
I I'm not, gosh, t- tell me, Jeff, are you needing a decision tonight? This is tough because I don't know what.
I don't need a decision, uh we we've already designed the plans, we're gonna have to modify uh the plan somewhat because of the turf area is gonna be removed. But we are looking to uh let this particular project, and I'm I'm speaking for Bruce, he's not here with us, but probably in the fall is when we're looking, so uh there 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 needs not to be a real decision right now.
Well, I I think we should be n- numbers driven to some degree, I have no idea what a what the long-term maintenance costs are. I also would point out, I think there's a roundabout coming here right off the end of this median to the south, correct? And who who is designing, I know we've got perhaps a sign going in there, but who's who's planting that? That Heather may seem like a town-owned roundabout that we plant cool annuals in, but I don't know, is that part of anybody's scope?
Hey, Councilman, uh Richardson, I I believe uh I believe we would maintain the interior of that roundabout. Um, Ms. Nichols, do you know as far as plantings that they've got?
I'm sorry, Mr. Child, do I know as far as plantings you went out on a little bit?
Uh, do we know as far as uh what kind of plantings are in the design for the uh roundabout, part of the signage, is that part of the scope?
No, sir, we don't have any actual plants at this time.
Okay.
Oh, maybe I can help with that.
I I think I think getting anything to grow in that roundabout is probably gonna be a challenge um without irrigation, I suspect that, but we might be able to plant some hardy, hardy things. I I think one thing to keep in mind when you're looking at these areas, uh you know, they're they're pretty, pretty bad environments for um for a lot of plants, so um you know, we we may just, I guess, need to think about what goes in that roundabout um.
All right, well, let's do this, uh let's come prepared on July twelfth to vote on irrigation. And Heather, and anybody that has a green thumb and is uh interested in this, get with uh Alex and uh and and Linda, y'all seem to be the the most uh knowledgeable about flowers. And uh.
And I I just wanna say, if you look around the area, Matthews, go down Queens Road, any place in Charlotte that you have a major intersection, and they're high-traffic areas too. I do understand the harsh environment, but this is the gateway into Stallings. It is a landmark intersection, and I think we want something that's a little nicer looking than day lilies. I mean, they they're just kind of unkept and look, and a lot of those other intersections are pres- pristine, very pretty, very well, and yeah, there's cost to it. Um, but we spend a lot of money on things that are probably less uh significant than this. So that's that's my argument. And with regard to the irrigation, w- we put it in. If it turns out to be more costly than we can stand to maintain it, then you just cut it off. But I have irrigation at my house, I've never winterized it and it doesn't freeze. So I I think we're exaggerating a little bit, the potential maintenance cost with this. So let's give it some thought and see what we can come up with.
All right, thank you, Linda. All right, Jeff, anything else?
Uh, that's pretty much it. You all just let me know uh what direction you wanna go with in terms of irrigation. But also, Heather, if you've got some plant selections and Linda, if you have some, please, please share, shower, shower me with that information, please.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Oh, I would ask that if you've got any plants that you'd like to see, kind of colors, uh Heather and Linda, if you would send them to me by um to get it ready for the twelfth. I mean, we probably need it by. Could you send it to me Friday, that way I could get it to Jeff?
Of course.
Okay, that'd be great.
When did you say?
Friday.
Okay.
Just so, just something to point out, I mean, we, obviously in downtown Stallings, we have a a nursery and they do have uh some plants there that that are specially grown to be hardy within our type of environment. So just something to think about.
Great, thanks, students. We'll put it on the agenda for the twelfth. Um, Jeff, are you available to potentially drive down here to chat with us?
Uh, what's that date again?
Um, July the twelfth.
July, I haven't, I haven't checked my calendar.
Yeah, we'll be meeting in person.
And so it'd be irrigation, uh decision, and then uh if we get some feedback from some board members about some plants they'd like to see. And uh I'm I'm sensing maybe we wanna maybe do some annual beds, Jeff, uh based on the conversation, and uh we can go from there.
All right.
All right.
All right, and can you get the agenda back up for us, please?
Kind of funny how we're almost back on schedule.
Aaron, I I'll share my own screen, thank you.
All right, here we go, number uh number seven, number eight, by uh Potter Pleasant Plains Intersection, all right, here we go.
So, all right, Potter Pleasant Plains Intersection, a lot of moving parts here, but I'm just gonna I'll walk everybody through this and uh highlight some key details, because in in some cases here, the details do matter. So just to remind everyone, uh there's several different funding original sources here that the town entered into to try to expedite the work that was part of the project. And those amounted to about two point eight two five million, that includes about four hundred thousand dollars from the town commitment. And this does not include the um the town uh committing to do other things outside of right-of-way acquisition, utility relocation, construction. Uh, for example, the town committed to do design. So um, long story short, as we've all talked about repeatedly over the past few meetings, there's a significant uh budget deficit and uh it's multi-millions of dollars it's projected. And so over the course of several council meetings in April and May of twenty twenty-one, the town identified a three-fold approach to address the identified budget gap for this project. Uh, first, to pursue budget shortfall funding through the Charlotte Regional Transportation Planning Organization, or CARPO. The second, to coordinate with our state-elected officials in an effort to try to secure additional funding from the state. And third, to request NCDOT cannot conduct immediate repairs at the intersection to address the immediate need for maintenance until until construction begins. So obviously, following those meetings on April the thirtieth, uh staff worked to with our engineers to submit a new formal application uh to CARPO for some additional budget shortfall funding. And on June the seventeenth, uh the town was informed that uh CARPO had approved budget shortfall funding in the amount of uh two million one hundred ninety-seven thousand six hundred dollars, which requires an additional twenty percent local match from the town of about five hundred and forty-nine thousand four hundred dollars. So that's the first update on the first. The second update was seeing if our state-elected officials could help identify some funding. So Mayor Dunn is engaged with our state-elect officials. And Representative Art reports that potential funding availability for this project will be unknown until the August, September timeframe uh due to the state's calendar. Uh, Mayor, anything else you wanna add to that particular item?
No, that's it, uh, you know. Dean thinks he's pretty, he Dean, you know, seems to think he can find some money, doesn't know if he can find uh how much, but he seems to think he can find some.
That'd be great. Um, and then finally, uh we requested that NCDOT conduct intersection repairs to address the immediate needs. And so DOT further investigated and determined that the entire intersection needs extensive res servicing. And they estimated that ballpark about three hundred thousand dollars. So NCDOT does not wanna spend that kind of money. Uh, it's just gonna be re- ripped up right in the next six months or a year, some timeframe like that. Um, and so uh they've indicated that they'll uh put those funds towards the project uh to help cover non-betterment costs that exceed cost allowances, including both grant and local.
And and what does that mean, Alex? That sounds like uh bureaucratic mumbo jumbo.
I hear you, um let me, let me uh let me try to explain it now, and when we go to the budget, I think it'll become uh easier to explain. So this work, uh there are things that are uh found to be uh betterments and non-betterment. So a non-betterment would be something like uh putting in the turn lanes, right, uh redoing the asphalt. Um, the betterment would be things like uh uh mast arms. It would be things like uh landscaping, and it would be things um like uh a lot of the the water and sewer work and just kind of replacing what was there. So one of the big parts, for example, of how this project was conceived uh with Union County was to upgrade some of the water and sewer system in this area, and so that would not be covered uh considered a a betterment. And uh that would not be, if those costs exceeded what it was estimated to cost, uh the uh DOT's three hundred thousand dollars would not go towards any uh additional amounts of funding that those would cost. But if things like adding the turn lanes or asphalt uh were higher, then those things would be uh that three hundred thousand dollars would be eligible to be used. But it wouldn't count towards any of our twenty percent uh local match, towards anything that's like that. That make sense, Mayor?
Uh, not a hundred percent, but I I'll I'll keep listening.
Well, let's let's go down and look at the budget, and I think it may be clearer, and if it's not clear, then let's circle back around and talk some more. Um, so just like anything, uh these charts, they're estimates, right? I wanna be very clear on that. Um, numbers could come in high, they could come low, there could be unknown things, there could be a variety of reasons these numbers change. So uh I wanna caution everybody that these are really uh these kind of preliminary estimates. We don't know what it'll ultimately cost, this is what we're projecting. So again, here's the original uh budget, uh two point four five million plus our four hundred thousand dollars of local match, including other things. The amount we've uh spent or incurred so far amounts uh to about this amount.
Now, there's there's language later on in this presentation about, or or some of it would talk about the state and and the federal may want us to pay money back. Wh- which one of these things would they want us to pay back?
Uh, Mayor, I I'm I'm guessing what you're referring to is uh if we did not move forward with the project, uh the money we'd have to pay back, is that right?
Right.
Yep, so uh thus far, uh we've uh submitted refunds for the work that's eligible that we've done so far, uh other than more recent utility work. Uh, and uh we've gotten uh a a some of that back. Uh, we've requested a hundred percent of this eight hundred and twenty-five thousand, and then eighty percent of this remaining back. And so most of that has been right-of-way work. There's been some other work that's included in there. Um, and so the reimbursement we've gotten back is about one point two one five million dollars. I can show you that exact amount as we keep going here. So that would be the amount that we would foresee, that if we didn't move forward with the project, uh we would likely uh have to repay.
Now, and so my thought is, you know, sooner or later, this intersection is gonna get improved, uh whether it's us or the state does it. And so let's say, you know, we can't afford it, and then the it the state picks this project back up in two years or so. It was uh money, the state's money that did pay for the acquisition, so why would we have to re- we would we have to repay it at that point? I don't know, I'm just thinking out loud, I know you don't probably don't have the answer, but uh.
Yeah, I I li- I think I know the answer, so it's it's federal money would be the answer, I believe. Um, and the federal government, I would think, would expect. Projects, purpose, go ahead, sir.
Well, then 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 somebody would have to come back by and 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 uh you know, we already have the right-of-way, somebody, we own the right-of-way, so the federal government's gonna have to pay us for the right-of-way.
Which. Right, it it at that point, if we didn't move forward, um I don't think the federal government would be the one coming in and inquiring the right-of-way. It's it's an interesting question, Mayor. Um, at that point of DOT down the road, if they were gonna be coming in and 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 doing the work, would we would we expect to sell the right-of-way to the DOT for the same cost?
Well, yeah, it wouldn't be the same cost, it went up, just like the project went up, so.
All right, I hear you, I understand where you're coming from.
Yeah, I'm just trying to think of the scenarios on all this, so all right, I got it now.
Good question. Uh, so again, uh moving forward, I would, our construction estimate put in a a fairly large contingency and escalation. And the reason I did that is because uh talking with uh the engineers, construction prices are fairly volatile right now. Um, and uh you're seeing in all phases of the American economy, labor shortages, uh difficulty in getting raw materials, uh manufacturing delays, and also delivery supply chain delays. So for example, we're already seeing some kind of water line uh price increase for that pool pipes. So I could see a number of um things potentially increasing as the uh as the months go on. I just like a lot of different phases of our society. And uh, you know, depending on the timing of how things go, thought a higher contingency and escalation factor was uh was appropriate on this side. DOT and CEI oversight cost, that's estimate based on our conversation with DOT and CARPO. Uh, the state SAP computer costs, uh that apparently fluctuates, uh was it two percent? DOT says it's now at two point six percent. Um, and that's the highest they've ever seen it, is what they told me. So I've used the the highest number in there uh to be on the side. Uh, engineering record coordination, planning updates, bid support, et cetera. Um, each time, you know, the project's delayed, we have to up all of these. And also, you know, there's work on the engineer's part to work with the contractor to make sure the plan is done appropriately. Uh, Duke Energy Utility Relocation uh Costs, some of those we paid, some of those have been incurred, we talked about that previously. Um, item seven eight, landscaping, landscaping design. Uh, the construction budget includes for uh having grass that were appropriate. Um, landscaping and landscaping design, this is something that the board, if it wanted to, could cut out, right? Or simply delay a decision on it. And so the total estimated construction cost to complete, again, this is estimated, would be about six point uh three uh three five million bucks. And then if you break out the betterment costs, again, we we touched on that briefly before. And then if you break out the betterment costs, again, we, we touched on that briefly before. Uh, the water sewer upgrades, not all, but the water and sewer work that's considered a betterment. Uh, is about one point three six million, uh, in landscaping design. As well as the cost of, uh, having mast arm poles. That's a, it's about a hundred thousand dollars. So I believe one of the, one of the reasons in addition to the traffic flow of, of doing this project initially was. Uh, trying to make the, the area look better. Um, so the betterments total out to about one point five one five million. Um, and here the total construction cost minus the betterments. And so this is kind of where the rubber meets the road as far as, um. Uh, the funding and how it breaks down. So our initial federal monies that we've had. This is the amount that we've been reimbursed thus far from NCDOT. Uh, I believe, Mayor, that was the number I believe you were referring to.
Right.
For that one point two one five million. Um, and then from there, the, uh, DOT cost, that's cost that, uh, DOT has already incurred. As far as oversight for the work thus far. And here are the remaining funds. Uh, eligible right now, about one point one four one million. Again, taking out what we've requested already from this amount, and that gives us this. So we think there's probably going to be a little bit of money we need to put in here for, um, kind of grant funding, support, compliance, administration. Any sort of lethal costs and anything miscellaneous that, that pops up. And so that gets us at, uh, this amount. With estimated cost incurred slash to complete. So that's about, uh, six million, three hundred and forty six thousand dollars. Again, talking round numbers. Uh, as part of our agreement with the county, you can see the estimated cost, uh, that. They would be obligated to, uh, reimburse the town for, for some work that they had committed to do. And then you factor in, here's the potential out of pocket cost to the town. Which that would be probably, I believe, more than our available fund balance. But we did get our, that Carpo money right there. Right? The two point one nine seven million and six hundred bucks. And so.
Alex. Where's the match showing up for that two point one nine seven?
Sure, sure. The match would, uh, be contemplated out of our, our, our out of pocket.
It's included in, in that two point zero?
Yes, sir. That's right. But just to, to specify what the match, uh, would be, uh, for the town there. It would be, uh, estimated at five hundred and forty nine thousand four hundred dollars. That would be the twenty percent that's part of this money. Five hundred and forty nine thousand four hundred dollars. Not including what we, what we had committed already for our local match.
Right, but the, the five hundred and forty nine thousand is, is included in that two million eighty one thousand?
Yes, sir. That's right.
Right.
Yes. That includes kind of all our local matches, if you will. Rolled into one number after assuming everything comes back, all the reimbursements go through, come back smoothly. Um, all those numbers. Um, I put the three hundred thousand dollars in here. You, you know, i- if the number, let's just assume for a second that all the numbers come back exactly as we estimated. We wouldn't tap into that three hundred thousand dollars. But if any of those non-betterment costs, uh, exceeded what we're estimated. Uh, and, and the kind of cost allowances that are there under the agreement, then, um. Then, under that scenario, tap into this three hundred thousand dollars and there would not be a local match that comes with that particular set of money.
So I'm, I'm a little bit back to the mayor's question about betterments, Alex. The three hundred thousand dollars only comes if the betterment costs are, or excuse me, non-betterment costs are above estimates. What are the estimates? And it just seems like we're saving the state three hundred thousand dollars. By paying for this ourselves. Um, just why is that contention upon anything?
Uh, that, that's the, that is what they've told us the conditions are to access that money, basically. So, uh, that was the, I think, the second question Brad, you posed. The first question is, what is the total cost minus the betterments? I believe in that be that. That cost right there.
So if there is cost overrun, we definitely would want that itemized as to where it's coming up, coming out at.
Uh, and. Yes, uh, this, the accounting for this project is, is going to be pretty complex. Um. And, uh, we're going to have to rely on our, our engineered record, I think, to break down that cost of what is a betterment, what's not. And to track it closely for a variety of reasons.
But Alex, this, this four point eight includes almost a million in contingency and something else. So is there three hundred thousand dollar only available above four point eight million dollars? Irrespective of whatever contingency we said. Does that make sense? But what, what is the contingency of six hundred thousand dollars instead of a million?
Yeah, I'm sorry, Brad. I, I didn't quite understand that. Help me.
Well, it probably doesn't make sense because I don't understand it. But if you're saying that the three hundred thousand dollar. Funding from NCDOT is contingent upon that four point eight million dollars being overspent. We, we spend more than four point eight million dollars, right? That four point eight million dollars includes about a million in contingency and something else.
Oh, good question. Good question. So I would actually, uh, say that the numbers are based on non-contingency allocations.
Okay, that makes sense.
That makes sense. Sorry, I, I misunderstood your question, but you, you're, where you're going is, is correct, uh, Councilmember Richardson. Um, Carpo wouldn't allow us to request funding for contingency, unfortunately. Um, and so the funding is based on the, the actual costs. So, um. You know, if, if you take, let's say, the contingency out of here at nine hundred and sixty four thousand and change. And you subtract it from here, right? Big difference, big difference.
In this budget, I mean, on the same, same thing, it looks like DOT oversight is almost a million bucks. And this is a DOT project. I mean, it seems like to me. Uh, that's, uh, I'm not really sure how I feel about that because it feels like we're getting double charged there, right? We're, we're, we're running their project, but they're charging us almost a million bucks to, uh, oversight it. I'm, I'm, I guess I'm not sure I, I'm, I'm just curious if there's any wiggle room there on that costing, given that this is really their project.
If, if you look at it too, Steve, we're really being triple taxed on it because some of this money is federal money. So that, that's income tax. You know, uh, and our portion is residential tax and then gas tax. So.
Yeah.
Uh, I, I'm having a heck of a time putting, you know. A large chunk of the town's reserves up to pay for a single intersection when it, it, that intersection just represents a loss of failure. Of our state government to do their freaking jobs. You know, pardon my French, but it is what it is. And our state reps don't really seem to care. You know, uh, it, it's just a, it's a Charlie Foxtrot, for lack of a better term. All right, keep going, Alex.
Great. Um, so I've broken down a, a lot of what we've kind of talked about here, uh, so we'll summarize it for the sake of time. Um, but, uh, kind of moving forward, uh. One of the things if we wanted to move forward now would be to execute a supplemental, uh, agreement with C D O T. Um, the parameters of negotiation for these things are, uh, are, are, are pretty narrow. Uh, because the state's got these standardized way of doing things. And so getting anything changed is a challenge. So, uh, I think we probably don't have as much room with the standard document as we would with the, say, negotiating contract with a vendor for. Five, say, right? Um, but, uh, here we were able to get one thing that I think is a key win.
That, that was, that's key there.
Yeah, so, um. Previously, the, the agreement said that all the maintenance responsibilities for all the safety improvements, um. Are going to be on the town, which, uh, I didn't think made sense for either the town or NCDOT. Um, for the town to maintain and effectively have control over, uh, the, uh, such a key corridor for our area. And, uh, and so we, we were able to change that to say DOT will assume all responsibilities for the improvement, uh, safety improvements. And the town will be responsible for the new pedestrian improvements. Um, it indicates, the supplemental agreement indicates that the town should complete the project by May the first, twenty twenty three. And, uh, once, uh, the town executes the agreement. Uh, DOT estimates could take about two months for the agreement to receive the required formal approvals from Raleigh. Um, and, uh, the original agreement with NCDOT would otherwise remain valid. Um. Uh, obviously, we've staffed diligently. We've spent a great deal of resources and energy. Uh, worked alongside Carpo and DOT to verify what parts of the project are eligible for reimbursement. And unfortunately, not all items are eligible for reimbursement. And those are the, uh, non-betterment items, design, uh, things like that, unfortunately. Um, and unfortunately, as discussed at our previous meeting, the league, uh, advised that the current interim guidance. Uh, regarding the American Rescue Plan specifically excludes transportation infrastructure projects from eligibility. So that, that's unfortunate. So next steps, um, if we do want to move forward. Uh, then the town council would need to approve the supplemental agreement and then send an executed agreement to NCDOT. Uh, C D O T again said it would take two months to get that process approved. And in the meantime, uh, there would need to be some loose ends that we're, we're working on tying up CEI selection, finalizing some environmental documents. Um, getting ready for bidding, but nothing that's anticipated to delay the project. Uh, if, if council wants to move forward now. Um, if, if, if the board does want to move forward with this project now, then I need y'all to approve me some money to kind of keep things moving. Uh, from a budgetary standpoint, with getting all the documents, making sure all the regulations on the plans are right. All these little things really, really, um, uh, add up. And I don't want to be coming back to y'all. Uh, I don't think it'll be that much, but, um, if we do move forward, I would get the sense the time was of the essence. So that's. Kind of ask for that. And if the town moves forward with this and awards a contract, staff would very, very, very cautiously project. Construction work, uh, could likely begin in quarter one of twenty twenty two. Uh, but again, there's numerous moving parts. And, uh, uh, that go along with this, for example. Uh, it would presume that the bids don't come back, you know. A million dollars above budget, right? Um, so again, please understand there's a rough approximation. Uh, the estimated timeframe to complete the project. Be, uh, approximately eighteen to twenty four months, uh, including the design team. Um, which when I first heard that, uh, it struck me as, as being extensive. Uh, given when you just kind of visually look at the intersection. From a first impression standpoint, but, uh, there's apparently some, some extensive, extensive utility work that needs to be done. That's going to be time consuming. Um.
So. I apologize, Alex, but, I mean, you just said twenty four months or eighteen months. But yet, a couple of pages back, you said the town is saying that they're going to be complete by May of twenty three. I mean, I'm not too quick on the, the math there, but, uh, that seems to be a, a little shy of, uh, a full stack of cards, man.
Yeah, we may need to update that, uh, depending on the timing of this. And a lot of that will depend on, um. On what happens tonight and what happens moving forward. But I don't anticipate any issues with updating that date in the future if we need to.
Okay.
And if, if we want to move forward, I could, with the council's permission, uh, ask that that be extended, uh, just preemptively to.
All right, what's the next slide? Because then the next one says, options.
Yep, so options. So, uh, the first option is, uh, basically the, let's move forward option. Approve the DOT supplemental agreement, uh, accept the Carpo funding, direct staff forward towards letting the project with a budget of fifty thousand dollars. And let the project with the understanding that the town is responsible for covering, uh, the budget funding shortfall is not covered by. The agreements, authorized funding at this point. Um, and so the pros of this are, uh, the intersection efforts could, improvement efforts could proceed. Uh, it'd probably be done quicker than other options. Uh, uh, we obviously get a lot of calls, this issue from the town. Um, you know, there may be an issue that at any given particular time, we get more calls on, but this one right now. Over the long run, we probably get the most cost. It's just been one that's been out there a long time. Um, and if the town shows not to move forward with the project, you know, we, we probably, uh, likely have to reimburse that. Over one point two million dollars that we talked about. Um, or so, in a sense, that's something of a, of a cost that's, that's already a bit expended. Um, and, uh, we would still be able to see what the bid amounts are. Uh, what the bid amounts are received at before we award a construction contract. So it's not like we, we vote tonight and say, yeah, we can get started now. Uh, we would, we would need to, uh, uh. Award the, uh, construction contract, the council would need to award the construction contract. And certainly it was higher than what we would want to move forward with, uh, we wouldn't have to at that. So the cons of that are, um, obviously we're spending a significant amounts of the town's fund balance reserves and on state roads. Um, would potentially take away funds from town operations, priority, et cetera, and thus may potentially hinder future efforts. Um, you know, you could be spending local funds, uh, when other further funding may be potentially available. Um, although the town could still pursue those state grants continuously. I'm sorry, was there a question? Okay.
No.
Got it. Um, and then again, the cons are the numbers or estimates. Uh, so again, these are estimates, so they could, they could change. They could be higher. Um, and then, uh, the second option would be kind of following the same approach as the first option. Uh, the only difference would be, uh, wait to see if any funds can be secured by our state elect officials prior to letting the project. Um, and only consider moving forward once that's been determined. So the pros of that would be continuing the pursuit of the non-local funds, which it's, if successful, would free up, uh. Significant town funds for town operations and pursuit of priorities. And we'd still plan to move forward towards, uh, addressing the intersection issue. The con would be, in the meantime, costs could potentially go up. Um, you don't know if we can delay it. Um, you know, uh, a recession could obviously change that dynamic, but typically in. The American economy over the long run, costs go up, right? Um, and, uh, also we may need to update plans and documents. Depending on the timeline, there are a number of environmental documents, regulatory documents, um, and it's not. Um and it's not just an on-off switch, it it takes time. And so depending on the timeframe, you might not need to update any of them, you might need to update. Some, and it could be potentially costly if you had to redo some of your environmental documents. Um obviously, if we delay it further, that could be unpopular to some members of the public. Um and in the meantime, the intersection would continue to function poorly. And then uh we would still need to kind of meet the deadline contemplated in the agreements. As council member ears uh correctly pointed out, we may need to, regardless of what we do, see if we can adjust that. Timeline into the future. Um and then the final option, and there's actually one where I wanna. You know, I was asked about today and I wanna kind of brief the board on. Um but just for this one not to move forward with the project, so. Uh you know, the town would not have to cover the estimated funding shortfall. And it could potentially put the responsibility of fixing the state road back with the state. I think um the commitment on the town's part when it was originally contemplated, I think it's fair to say was. Much less than what it is today. Um I think the town was trying, my reading of the situation, having not been here, but my reading is the town. Was frustrated with not add what it perceived to be adequate progress. And uh towards fixing it and was trying to jump in to help out. And uh it's uh become much more than I think was originally conceptual. Um so the cons of not moving forward is that the federal government would require us to repay. Likely some of those funds. Um and NC DOT did not know if there would be any other further penalties. Um so if we wanna pursue this option, we'd probably need to research this further. We'd probably get into a legal analysis, honestly. Um we would potentially forego the benefit of project expenses paid incurred by the town to date. Um perhaps there's a way to kind of resell it. Um we'd have to think through that, but sounds like a creative idea. Um and then the intersection would continue to function poorly. And there would be no anticipated timeframe and plan really of when and how it would be fixed. Other than we would uh conceptually under this hypothetical, toss it back in DOT and say, hey, y'all figured it out. Um I I think it would be controversial with some members of the public. And likely increased distrust and confidence in the town with some, just because uh. You know, this project was originally contemplated, being finished by two thousand sixteen in the original agreement. Obviously, wasn't, that wasn't done, and it's just gotten pushed back for a variety of reasons. So that's why I had that in there. And if if we don't follow through with with uh that grant, it could potentially hinder our ability to get certain grants and. Um and the fi- final uh uh item I wanted to kind of mention. Is the possibility of turning it over to requesting DOT take part. Uh take this project and and plug it into the uh Old Monroe Road project. Um DOT has expressed some openness to that. Um in previous conversations. Uh my conversations with DOT would indicate that all the money the town would be putting into this project. Would still need to um go into it, including all of our local matches, those those kind of things. Um the question arose as to uh what about if there are excess expenditures? Um you know, who would cover those costs right now? It's uh. If if all the funds are tapped out, it would be the the town of Salons, right? Um and in talking with uh NC DOT, they've indicated uh that the uh. Uh that typically the town is responsible for those kind of uh uh costs. If uh they're happy to kind of have further conversations and explore that a little bit more. But that the most likely scenario would be that the town would still be on the hook for. Um the expenditures above what is is allocated, uh if they come back higher. Uh the construction schedule, if we were to do that, to add is uh. Is currently slated by NC DOT to start in twenty twenty-four. Um although, you know, we certainly know those DOT. Construction schedules tend to be fluid for a variety of reasons, so it's certainly not set in stone. So those are all the the options as as I've, I can see them, the pros and cons. I'm happy to answer any question. Back and and listen to the conversation. So thank you.
All right, thank you, Alex, for that, all those details and uh. Linda, being the vice chair of Carpo, do you have any uh comments you wanna lead it off? Are you on mute?
I was the one who asked Alex today about rolling this project in with NC D um with the widening of Old Monroe Road. Because that was an option that we had discussed with Brett Knype at some point earlier. And it really seemed like a pretty good option to me. Um it would involve some delay, um but I I personally would still like to have some additional conversation about that. Um I'm I'm like the rest of you, I, it kills me to think the town is spending this kind of money. Or possibly spending this kind of money to do a state, what should be a state road project. Um I regret that we ever got into this. I hope we've learned our lesson and never do it again. But um I mean, something does have to be done to this road. And I guess the other question I have is, you know, trying to get some clarification about whether or not we would, in fact. Have to um repay the monies that uh we've been reimbursed there. Because uh the question you raised about right away, I mean, we do have. Things to show for how that money was spent. It wasn't like we accepted it and just didn't use it or blew it. So I don't know that I'm giving you the answers you're looking for. It it's a really tough call. Uh and I'm not sure how how we're gonna get past this. I mean, there's no question, the intersection, and and it's not just the intersection. I think we do lose sight of the fact that we're getting um. Much-needed water and sewer lines with this project that the county is doing, which will. Um enable some better development in that area, and that's something that we've wanted for quite a long time. Uh and the intersection, actually, the improvements do include going almost all the way to Monroe Road. That's why I think there was some interest possibly in combining it with the widening of the Old Monroe Road project.
Well, just, you know, uh you make some great points, but you know, when we entered into this contract, we thought it was gonna cost us less than a million dollars.
Right.
And and uh not uh four-point something, five-point something, so. Uh any other comments, questions?
Well, I'm gonna play the other side of the fiddle there. I mean, I I'm, I'm really reluctant to hook in our. Our cart to the Monroe widening, because if we hook their cart to that, it should be done this year, right? Cause uh it should, that that road was gonna be done this year as far as that's concerned. So my my concern with that is that that puts us on a road and what, how did Alex put it? Just to, you know, the the dates there could be fluid. I mean, it could be two years, it could be another four years or whatnot. And I guess it it feels like if we have to pay back the one point two million. That's roughly the amount of overcost, give or take a couple of hundred thousand dollars. That we're over budget now, so it seems to me like we're gonna be out one point two million. Either way we go, either we put it into the intersection or we have to give it back. In basically a refund, if that's the case. I mean, it, obviously. I've probably, I've made myself probably pretty clear. I mean, I'd like to see this move forward. Uh simply because to the best of my knowledge, this is the one thing that citizens have requested the most out of us. So I feel like it's not we're spending frivolous money, we're spending their money on what they've asked for us to do. And so, I mean, that's that's just my two cents there.
All right, thank you, Stephen. Yeah, anybody else?
Well, I I think I agree with both of you. Um how's that?
That's very non-committal, Brad, very nice.
So so some context here, uh I drive through the intersection a lot, probably, probably not as much as Steve does, and and it's it's bad. And Alex and I and a few neighbors have talked about offline, Steve as well, about doing some interim traffic management by prohibiting left turns. And what would that do? And and there's a twelve-week study that would be required at some cost to. See if that would be helpful. That that's the biggest problem. There's left turns on the Pleasant Plains, which backs up traffic. I went Indian Trails Town Council meeting the other week for uh another reason, Jennifer had a business item on there, so I I tagged along. They were talking about a development project down at uh Potter's and uh McLendon Road, a little bit further south of this. And they got hit hard about this intersection, and and they didn't throw us under the buses necessarily. They did a fine job, but but it is an Indian Trail problem, it is a Weddington problem. Those who travel. Just aren't the answers. I'd like the mayor to continue to work on Dean and others. Um I'd hate to do something that would, that would have have the state. Sorry, that was my phone. I have state to take their eyes off of this from a political standpoint, so I think we should do that. I'd like to know if we could finance some of this. Um how how have we determined to to pay for this if we needed to? And I think we do, we just need more money. I would, I I think. If I read Alex's notes correctly, the the contingency puts it at two million, but that's a fairly aggressive contingency, which I would support. Um so I I'm I'm leaning toward getting it done. I just don't know how to do. I think we need more money. We need to think about financing it.
Ballroom.
Ballroom. I don't think we need.
Yeah, non, non-Stollings residents.
All right, anybody else? All righty, and what's the uh, you know, what's the uh the consensus of the council of what we do, you know? To me, there's still too many unknowns. Uh let's say Dean comes back with a million dollars. Does that change our decision? Does that?
Yes.
Yeah, it does. It's uh. So he said October, September, after they finished their budget. When I first approached him, you know, several months ago, he seemed confident he could find a million dollars. I mean, good gravy, I don't know what their budget is, but. They got money, a million dollars sitting around like, yeah.
Oh, the the latest newspaper articles I'm reading, Mayor, maybe you are too, that they're flushed with cash now because they've been.
Yeah, they're flush with cash, yes. So.
Even.
Don't we need a new Ferrari for the town?
Yeah, so I'd hate to commit to anything and then uh not get the money. It was just too many unknowns right now, in my opinion. But I I'd I would just say, let's go ahead and uh get DOT to pave it, repave it for three hundred thousand dollars. Uh I think that's a a good uh bet that we're not gonna have to uh pay any overruns on that.
I do know Brett Knype said they were reluctant to spend three hundred dollars on an intersection that was gonna be redone in another year or so. I mean, that seemed like a complete waste, but it would improve matters until the larger project is completed.
Yeah, and and to everybody's point, we. Yeah, I I don't think DOT or us or anybody's gonna be ready for to improve, to start construction in a year. Uh on this project, so. If it is, then hey, DOT, sorry, we missed it. Hey, you're you're not the only one that uh misses the target dates. But uh to me, I'd make that commitment that uh. Get the three hundred thousand dollars and repave it.
Repaving doesn't, it only, I I hear you, Mayor, but repaving only fixes. Part of the problem. I mean, the backups that are happening there are as big or the bigger problem. And so I I I'm not sure that that, I I personally don't know if that's money well spent. It's fixing kind of the lesser of the two issues that we're seeing in that area. I mean, I think most people would say that the backups are far more, or I wouldn't say far more, but are probably the heavier hand of the situation. That's causing grief for people.
Those are still gonna be there a year from now, two years from now, maybe.
Yeah, and and we also don't know the impact of, you know, the new off-ramp or on-ramp right there at uh Matthews Weddington Road and four eighty-five. I still think with all that traffic coming up from Weddington and heading to, you know, uh Old Monroe Road anyway, to just to get on four eighty-five. Um you know, they're gonna have a shorter route, but we don't have the studies to prove it either.
Right, and that's traffic outside of Stallings. I mean, I guess I'm thinking more of the Stallings residents that are having to deal with this.
But it's the traffic from outside of Stallings uh that's generating the backups. I mean, you, we don't have a ton of Stallings residents down in that area, you know, what, a thousand, two thousand? So when we get those hundred deep backups right there, that's Indian Trail residents, or that's uh Weddington residents cutting up and and trying to get four eighty-five.
What did Alex need tonight? He said something about needing authorization for like fifty grand, which is not a lot of money to do something. What was that about, Alex? Is that just to keep the conversations going?
I mean, Councilmember Richardson, that's that, that would be the cost to um basically update. Uh all the uh all the plans, get everything ready, basically to go to bid and go out to bid, I think.
And then you're wanting to know whether or not we submit the formal NC DOT documents, right? I mean, if we go forward with your option one, I mean, we still are, or I think you had it as option two. I mean, we could still move forward with the DOT agreement, the fifty thousand dollars. And then go to bid and find out what comes back from the bid, right? Cause I mean, if it comes back from the bid lower than what we're looking at, maybe that changes our ideas here. And then that puts us in the same timeframe, it sounds like, that Dean ARP would be able to come back and tell us whether or not we've got the million dollars. So we don't, if we go with that option two, we're not losing any time, we're staying on top of our paperwork. And I mean, it kind of feels like we would get the N NC DOT approval about the same time. Back from Dean ARP. I mean, to me, that sounds like the best option at the moment. Because that keeps us moving forward and provides us with. And and doesn't shut down any of the other opportunities that we have available to us.
Is that a true statement, Alex?
Yeah, so uh. You know, option, option one, um if if we, if the board chose to approve the supplemental DOT agreement. Um you know, accept the Carpo funding and let the project, right? Um then uh we could, we could see what the cost came back as. And uh and kind of go from there, and in the meantime, uh attempt to. Uh work with our state elected officials to kind of secure that funding. So you wouldn't have to kind of move forward uh with awarding the contract until the council felt comfortable with it. Um we're we're in a bit of a Chinese finger trap in that. Uh we've already agreed, right, to to do this, right? So we're kind of on the hook for doing it. Uh what the supplemental agreement will do would just be providing more money. Off, offering more money to to help with it, basically. So if it came back less than what is is estimated. Um you know, that's certainly a possibility.
Can you scroll down to option two?
Sure, be glad to.
And go back to one, I I mean, can you put them on the same screen, lower down, I mean, minimize it a little bit so I can see both at the same time? There you go. Thank you.
Can you read that?
Yeah.
You got good eyes.
Well, I moved six inches from the screen.
So what is the difference between one and two? It it sounds like the same thing to me, and I can't read it now that it's small, so.
Great question, Linda. It's practically the same, except you don't let the project. Um, and the the thinking there is that perhaps we might have more of a forceful argument with our state folks if we were to say, um hey, listen, we can't move forward without you funding this versus uh we we're gonna let this and we're gonna take care of it anyway, right? Can you give us any money to help make up the difference?
I guess my question is, if we uh sign and approve the supplemental agreement, is there an out to that if we change our mind?
There is not, um, and that's the uh Chinese finger trap I was uh referring to earlier, because we're are, there's not an out right now, right? Other than renouncing the project and giving back the money. So there there's really not a not an out, sort of refunding the money unless we can figure out a way to get the project done, really, so.
Let me ask her question a different way. We're we're already in a NCD, I mean, an NCDOT agreement. The supplemental agreement just kind of resets some of the parameters based on the new dates and the new funding or new costing. But we're in the, we're in the Chinese finger trap currently. This doesn't option one or two doesn't put us any farther in the Chinese finger trap.
Right. I mean, we would, we would be expending more money towards it, right? So if we didn't want to potentially move forward to get everything ready to bid, but really, the the problem is the same, right? Like, the town agreed to kind of take on this work uh to spend local funds to enhance the state state property, right? And we're kind of in this this pickle, right, where we all kind of sense it in that we we wanted to help out, but we we have this sense that it's perhaps, you know, more of the state's responsibility than ours morally, for lack of a better word, but at the same time, contractually, legally, at this point, we're responsible for it, right? Because we've agreed to make it a locally administered project.
Yeah, but we agree, we didn't agree to uh spend four million. We agreed to spend four hundred thousand plus uh, you know, contingencies. So that's that's in the contract.
So it could probably be argued that DOT is in breach of contract when they change the terms to that degree.
Well, I think the contract says that we're responsible for overruns, too. I think that that's the piece that's that's uh.
Does. Did the old one have that, too, Alex?
I I believe it does. I'm checking it right now. But I believe uh I believe that's the case.
We we need to, we need to have a proclam- proclamation after this is done that says, never do this again.
I agree.
By the way, we've had this conversation with our with our WMA partners and and uh it was somewhat entertaining. So uh, so hopefully, if nothing else, uh, we've we've saved the same heartache from some of our partner towns.
Well, hindsight's twenty twenty. In two thousand fourteen, we were flush with cash. We were only spending four hundred thousand plus a couple hundred thousand to get the intersection i- improved. No no brainer. You know, we loan, we loan, how much did we loan? And then we we were flush with cash when we loaned the developer to put in the roundabout. You know, so now we're not flush with cash, because we spent, you know, uh, two million on the town hall and some other things, so. Times change, but uh two thousand fourteen, we were flush with cash. And it was to help speed up the project, to help the community. That's all them four hundred thousand was doing, helping speed up the project.
Would uh, would we uh, if we table this till the next meeting, to give us some time to really think about it, reduce numbers? And would that hinder any of the uh process, Alex, Mayor?
No, we don't need to make a decision tonight.
Mayor, Mayor Tim Paxton, I I believe that you uh had asked whether uh the original agreement uh indicates whether we're on the hook with overages, and it does. So it says subject to compliance by the municipality. Here, let me pull it up here.
Yeah, that's all right. We don't need to know. As long as it said, I mean, the overruns aren't uh two million dollars, one point six, one point eight. You know, overruns are, I think we could argue that.
Oops. Yeah, I I think it's uh.
But hey, let's uh, yeah, David's a good point. We'll table this till uh July twelfth. I'm gonna be on the phone tomorrow with Dean. I think he needs to come to our in-person, to our July twelfth meeting and uh get uh his statements on the record and uh see what he can do to help. He probably still doesn't know how much money he can find us, but uh the way DOT's uh, you know, he needs to represent us, not DOT. So that's what uh my point of talking to him is. All right, any other questions for Alex on this? All righty, we'll move on to uh number nine. Chief Frank, sorry, sorry to keep you waiting.
Mayor, may I ask a a quick disconfirmation uh question? So what I'm hearing is um uh don't proceed with with any further work on the plans, hold off on those. Um, and let's just kind of wait and see if any uh if any state funds wait to get an answer on the state fund. Am I hearing that correctly?
Right, yeah, don't do any work on it. We're not spending more money on it, but let's talk, keep talking to DOT. Let's, I'll keep talking to Dean ARP and then uh see if we're ready to make a decision on July twelfth.
Okay, just to summarize, so uh table it to uh July the twelfth. And then uh keep talking to to DOT and Representative ARP. And uh basically the uh hold off on uh further plan updates. Get.
All righty.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you. All righty, Police Department Retirement Side Arms consideration from uh Chief Franks. You still on board?
I'm still here.
All right, thank you for hanging in there.
Absolutely. Uh, good evening, Mayor and Council. Um, August first, John Flynn will retire. He's our Assistant Chief. He will retire uh with thirty-three years of service, seventeen years uh with Stallings Police. And then on September first, Sergeant Doug Hearn will retire with seventeen years of service to Stallings Police Department. Um, state statute allows for police officers to purchase their service pistol for one dollar. And tonight, I'm coming to the council to ask you to allow both Assistant Chief Flynn and Sergeant Hearn uh to purchase their service pistol.
I'm moved.
All right, motion by Mr. Shoal, second by, I think, I think it was Mr. Ayers. And uh to uh support this uh sale of the service weapon, so uh I think we can uh do this one. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, ayes have it. Thank you, Chief Franks. Oh, we have an ordinance. What is this, the uh?
This for the next item, sir.
Oh, this is number ten?
Yes, sir.
Oh, supplement eleven of the code. Okay, so you're, this is you, Aaron. All right, sorry, thank you.
Yes, sir. Um, for those who you are, who aren't aware, um every so often, we do take all the ordinances that the council has already adopted, and we send them off to a company called American Legal, and they actually codify our ordinances to our Code of Ordinances. So this is all this is, is just a a way of letting you know that we have completed supplement eleven for the Code of Ordinances. And um it's just ordinance saying that we have done that and so that you're aware.
All righty, thank you, Aaron. Can I get a motion to approve this uh adopting this ordinance?
I'm moved.
All right, motion by, I think, Mr. Martin, second by Mr. Shoal, I think. Uh, and uh let me read this into it. Whereas American Legal Publishing Corporation has completed the codified version with supplemental eleven to the Code of Ordinances of the Town of Stallings, which the supplements contain all ordinances, ordinances of a general and permanent nature enacted since the prior supplement to the Code of Ordinances of the Town of Stallings. And whereas the codified ordinances contain the official ordinances of the town, now thought therefore be it ordained by the Town Council of Town of Stallings that the codified version to supplemental eleven to the Code of Ordinances of the Town of Stallings is official version for the town. So we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? And the ayes have it. All righty. Thank you. All right, that brings us to adjournment. Any other uh, any uh thing, any discussion that you will, we will meet in person July twelfth? I don't know if we'll have a uh ribbon cutting or not. I I've talked to Alice about that, but uh we may have one, may not, but but we'll have one soon, if not on the July twelfth.
Mayor, we're we're planning on uh on on having something uh for a few minutes before. And we could, we could move it uh to August if that'd be preferable.
No, if you're ready, and you know, we can invite the, you know, state representatives and uh and the county commissioners, and if you're ready, you know, we can do it on the twelfth.
Ms. Nichols, Ms. Black, what's your, what's your thinking on that?
Um, I actually met today with uh Eunice, Alex, and um we are prepared to have that on the twelfth. We already have preparations underway.
All right. Well, council, spread the word then, so to your friends and neighbors and constituents that uh that will be meeting in person, and their new town hall will be there for them to to look, take a look at. And then I see Mac, you're still on. Uh, do we need to do a closed session? Anytime soon on Stinson Farms?
Mayor, that case is being taken over by the League of Municipalities for Defense, so we'll be hearing from a different attorney on that.
All right, well, hopefully you'll still be involved somehow. How does that work?
Uh, I will be available to consult and to answer questions about all the documents. This is gonna be a document-rich case, and I'm I'm prepared to walk the new attorney through what we've got and what some of it meant, the background to it.
Yeah, are you familiar with the league attorney?
Yes, sir.
All right, well, good. At least you know him. So that's a good, that's a good thing, so.
Yes, sir.
All righty, anybody else have any comments? All right, can I get a motion to adjourn?
I moved.
Was that you, Heather?
No, it's me.
Keep her credit for one.
Must must have been Linda. Motion by Mrs. Paxton, second by Mr. Shoal. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Oh, okay. Thank you all for your work tonight.
Well.
Good night.
Night.